We're ready.
Ready, Mayor.
What time do you have on yours?
It's real.
Good afternoon. It's Monday, October 6th, 2025. We are at Carmel City Hall and I'm calling this special meeting of the Carmel by the Sea City Council to order at 3:00 PM. City Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Councilmember Booter?
Here.
Mayor Proton Dels?
Here.
Councilmember Jarmo?
Here.
Mayor Byrne?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Okay. Do you want to start that now? Good.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, I'm sorry. I just received a call about 30 minutes ago. Denny Levat died. And just for everyone's benefit, he did a lot of, he did a lot of deals with the city for residential lots and, you know, we were, we were partners in the expansion of the Cypress Inn. The city was a couple of decades ago. And so, yeah, it's, it's a kind of a loss to the village. He was a real kind of one-of-a-kind village character. So with the council's permission, maybe we could adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory. Thank you, Mayor.
That's a tough one. For all of us who've been coming here for a long time, he was an icon. All right. Welcome to all attending today in person and remotely, and thank you for investing your time and attention to help us manage our city. This meeting is conducted in a hybrid format. You can view this meeting and participate online with comments on Zoom or live stream or watch this meeting later on the city's YouTube page if you don't wish to make a public comment. Nova, could you read the public comment instructions for tonight?
Yes.
Today?
Yeah. During special city council meetings, public comments are permitted on items listed on the agenda. After each item on the agenda is introduced, the mayor will invite public comment on that item. Each speaker has three minutes to speak unless otherwise adjusted by the mayor. While stating your name is optional, it helps to identify speakers in the meeting minutes. Remote or in-person participants who do not comply with the requirements of the Brown Act will be muted.
Thank you. Today, we have six consent agenda items, three orders of business for the public session, and three closed session items. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the council or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for council discussion and/or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. So, item one, I'm going to read through each of these. They're not on the screen, but it's okay. Item one is September 3rd and 8th, 2025 special meeting minutes and September 9th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. August 2025 month report, this is item number two. Item number three, August 2025 check register summary. Item number four is Resolution 2025-082, establishing the meeting dates of the city council for calendar year 2026. Item five, Resolution 2025-083, authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-550 LT40 utility bucket truck from Terex Utilities under Southwell Contract Number 110421-TER in the amount of $196,173. Number six, Resolution 2025-084, authorizing a refund of design review application fee in the amount of $3,611.25 to Esperanza Carmel. Is that me?
That's me.
Esperanza Carmel Commercial LLC. We'll finish that off. All right. Does anybody from the council want to pull an item? Seeing none, anyone from the public want to pull an item? Wow. All right. Could I have a motion to approve all items, number one through six?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Dels?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmo?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that's an example of how the consent agenda can save time. Thank you, everybody. And I have to say that I didn't pull it, but I'm very excited about the utility bucket truck, and I'm sure all the rest of you are. And I know that the forestry team is very excited about it. So thank you, everybody, for approving that. All right. We can move right on to orders of business. These are agenda items that require city council discussion, debate, direction to staff, and/or action. The first item is something that we brought forward from last month after we had a discussion on it. And it's the Resolution 2025-085, authorizing the city administrator to execute a professional services agreement with Opticos for a not-to-exceed fee of $212,290 to prepare objective design and development standards, also called ODDS, for accessory dwelling units, multifamily residential, and mixed-use residential. And as I said, this was on the agenda last month, and we're now going to hear a staff report, which includes probably those changes and the current proposal for consideration today. Marnie?
Good afternoon. So I am back to talk about the professional services agreement with Opticos. So this is a contract to implement Housing Element Program 1.4.0B to create objective design and development standards for the review of multifamily and mixed-use projects that include affordable housing. We're also using this opportunity to create objective design standards for accessory dwelling units. A portion of this project would be funded through a REAP 2.0 grant, just shy of $80,000. And the original timeframe to adopt this particular Housing Element Program was December of 2025. However, we are requesting an extension from the State Department of Housing and Community Development as part of the Housing Element Amendment. And so we're looking for a deadline of June 2027 for that extension. And that just gives us plenty of time to, to finish the project. So as we talked about last time, objective design standards are clear, measurable rules that do not involve personal opinions or subjective judgments. These are some examples of the difference between subjective versus objective. I added a new one, just to keep life interesting. So a subjective standard would be human-scaled entries are encouraged. And then what we're trying to create is something more objective, which would be a front entry shall consist of a single door that is no taller than seven feet, six inches. So that really is the goal of creating these design standards, is to create statements that are very clear in what our expectations are for design. So there are a number of benefits to objective standards. We did go through this last time as well. It provides some predictability for those who are submitting applications to know exactly what they need to do to get their project approved. It helps speed up the design review process. It also creates an element of fairness, where everyone is following the same set of rules. And then it also helps to meet our goals, ensuring that we can add more housing to the community, which is part of what our Housing Element aims to do. So we released a request for proposals in December of 2024, and after two deadline extensions, we received three proposals. Two were responsive to the RFP. It was M Group and Opticos, both of which are very well-qualified and have the demonstrated experience and proficiency to produce odds. We did select Opticos for their depth of experience, their detailed proposal, and their approach to developing the odds. So Opticos is a nationally-recognized urban design, planning, and architecture firm. They are passionate about creating vibrant, healthy, and sustainable places. For over 25 years, they have prepared downtown plans, revitalization strategies, and form-based codes, including odds, for 23 California communities that are seeking to comply with pro-housing state laws. They also provide strategic advice for communities as well. So they have maintained a consistent and highly-respected track record with both private and public clients who seek quality design in response to local context and public processes that are inclusive and effective in navigating complex local issues. They collaborate with the public, the development community, as well as planning staff, to develop solutions and standards that deliver high-quality design and more housing choices. I will also note, too, as some of you may know, we just had a three, three- or four-day planning conference here in Monterey, and Opticos was well-spoken of throughout the conference, which was, was nice to hear. They have a wonderful reputation, and they've done some great work in this space for other communities. So moving on to the revised project scope, when we talked about this contract last month, the council was looking for some more robust public outreach. And so in working with the consultant, we're still proposing the same two-phased approach, prioritizing the ADUs. We have expanded the initial timeline from four months to eight months to complete design standards for ADUs. That includes four community meetings, a planning commission study session, and one adoption hearing. Phase two would follow with the multifamily and mixed-use design standards. Again, approximately eight months to complete that phase. There would be three additional community meetings, an additional planning commission study session, and an adoption hearing for those as well. So the project timeline has extended from 12 months out to about 16 months. The outreach still includes the local industry roundtable meeting. I mentioned the two study sessions, as well as two adoption hearings. One thing we wanted to sort of ask the council tonight is whether you want to include some additional adoption hearings. So we talked previously about moving the ADUs through the entire adoption process, separate from the multifamily. And so if that is something you want to do, completely bifurcating ADUs from multifamily, we would need to add a couple adoption hearings into the scope. So again, the approach remains the same as we had discussed last time. The Opticos team would conduct a field visit, so boots-on-the-ground walk of Carmel, and documenting, basically, the architectural styles, the details, the character of what makes Carmel unique. They would note all of the physical characteristics, and they refer to this as noting Carmel's DNA. So they're really looking at what makes Carmel special. So this includes, you know, the width of our buildings as perceived from the street, the length of the buildings as seen by neighbors, the scale of entries, how buildings relate to the public way, height, massing, all of those elements, specific to the buildings that are currently in, in our community, collecting and documenting those, that information to really understand what the unique character and appeal of Carmel is. And then armed with that information, as well as gaining input from the community and our decision-makers, combined, that is what will inform the design standards that are proposed. I had brought this document to the, the meeting last month and just wanted to highlight a different page from this booklet. This is an example from the City of Santa Barbara's Objective Design Standards, and I pulled out the windows section from the Craftsman style, just to kind of give you a flavor of what these objective standards could look like. So for windows, for Santa Barbara, they call out two materials for the Craftsman style. It's wood or aluminum-clad wood. You know, we could certainly add more materials if we wanted to. The standard proportion is a two-to-one height. There are a number of other options available, depending on what the window is being used for, if it's a bathroom window, dormer window. So you can get down to that level of specificity. They identify the sash width, the trim width, and all of these smaller elements are what, combined, actually reflect what the style of this building is. They identify that trim only applies when the building has lapped siding. They have a sill projection minimum, so that, you know, really adds to what the character of the window is supposed to look like. And then, of course, mullions, which is something that's really important in our community. We can really get into details about what we want those to look like. So this just kind of gives you a flavor for that. This is sort of the objective part of design that we're, we're trying to achieve. So with that, staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution. The total cost of the contract did increase. Previously, it was $180,000. It has gone up to $212,290. And that will conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. We also do have Tony with us again this evening from Opticos, and he's available to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Marnie. I've got some questions, but do you want to start? Do you have some?
I don't have any. Thank you, Marnie.
Jeff?
Apologies for the interruption before. No, I do not have any questions.
Marnie, I have, I have a question about the, the number of style subgroups that's in the scope. So I hope I'm using the right language. I think it's, there are, we're given six styles across three subgroups in the scope, is what, what I saw. And so it seems to me that our goal should be to match, like, the style of the ADU to the house, like, that, that should be, you know, if we achieve that, then that's a win. And, you know, one of my questions is just, do we have enough of these subgroups to capture the number of different styles that we have in Carmel? So, you know, as an example, they reference sort of a Mediterranean-style group, which could include, in other communities, Spanish colonial revival and Italian-Mediterranean styles. So you've got this group, and then you have a specific, you know, two or three different styles under each. And so then I started to sort of think about that in the context of Carmel, and I was like, okay, well, we're going to have a Mediterranean, clearly going to have a Mediterranean group, and it's going to have, you know, at least a couple of different styles. And then, you know, probably going to have a quote-unquote "modern" group, and it might have, you know, mid-century, and it might have some of the newer stuff that we've seen. So, you know, I'm already at two groups, and I only have one left. So that's got to encompass everything from Tudor revival, Craftsman, to fairy tale Comstock, to, you know, those new stucco things that all the, you know, flippers like to, to do. So I guess my question is, like, have you thought about that? Like, what, is it possible to incorporate all of those into the third bucket? Like, do we have enough buckets in the scope?
Maybe another way to ask the question is, how did we come up with three?
So originally, the project, just for context, the project as written in the Housing Element was to create odds for multifamily. So the idea was that we were going to look at predominant styles downtown for multifamily buildings. We were going to pick a couple of the, the most prominent and develop our odds based on that. With the addition of ADUs to odds, it adds a different kind of element to the project. But we're trying to fit it in, even though odds for ADUs is a different, it's different than doing odds for, like, a multifamily building, right? So, cost is a factor. I mean, we could have as many styles as we want, depending on, you know, how much money we want to pay for each style. But the idea is to match the house for the ADUs. We have to identify some type of style of that house to match. So the idea isn't to create a design, like a fairy tale design, and say, okay, if you have a Comstock, you follow this. The idea is to create elements of a style, so that if you have a Comstock, you can follow these, these elements, and the two will be compatible. So not everybody that has a Comstock is going to have the same exact-looking ADU, if that makes sense. So the three broad categories are intended to be very broad. The subcategories are trying to capture the difference styles within. We're probably not going to capture every style in Carmel, but we're going to try to do the majority, if we can. I would imagine that fairy tale is probably not in the majority, so I don't know if that one would be one that we would spend a lot of time on. But those are things that we're going to kind of tease out through the process in working with the community as well. But with the ADUs, the, really, the intent is to match the house. It's just how we get there. And we talked with the consultant about doing, like, style-neutral, not identifying any style at all. And it was really challenging, because if you don't have a style to work from, how do you create the details and the standards for the, for the odds? Like, you need something to kind of work off of.
All right.
Just a quick follow-up on that.
I think we're going to end up in a discussion. Maybe we want to get the questions, and then we'll come back. And you brought up a great point.
Yeah. No, that's, my, 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 my one quick follow-up on that is, if you have, say, somebody owns, you know, like Hansel and Gretel or something like that, and it's, it's, we don't have that as a style, they can opt to go through, to not use the odds, right?
We can build that into the process.
What process?
We haven't developed it yet. But that, I mean, that can absolutely...
Yeah, I can, I can save that for discussion, but...
Because right now, right now, we can't ask any questions, right? They just get to do whatever they want to do within a very, pretty large range of options.
Right.
Okay. Bob, do you have one? All right. Go ahead.
A quick question based on Hans's question. So based on your example of the Comstock house, what's the intersection between these guidelines and historical properties? So if you have a historic property, if you have a property that's been deemed historic, and maybe you even have, like, a Mills Act property, where we've put additional requirements on the houses, that you can't, you can't do this, and you can't do that, to a Mills Act house, you know, those requirements are even more stringent. Can those two categories of homeowners come to the ADU process and do whatever they want, superseding, like, the historical properties, and then the historical requirement, and then the Mills Act?
No.
Thing that they've signed up for?
No.
So in Hans's example, or your example of the Hansel and Gretel house, could someone that owns, you know, a fairy tale house just come put whatever they want? Or is that sort of shut it off into the, you still get to go through the design review process? Like, are they carved out an exception in the law?
So, for the historic homes, no, they don't get to do whatever they want, and they certainly don't get to do that today. If they're designing an ADU, they have to respect the historic character of the, of the property, and they have to go through the normal channels to ensure that the historic resource is protected. You know, we do have fairy tale-style homes that are not historic resources, so there is an argument to be made that it could be a style. But historic is kind of its own, its own process, because they're, they are not exempt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can we continue in the discussion, please? I have a question. Why is this taking eight months? I know that there are a lot of people that are listening to this that are saying, we'd like this taken...
Two months.
Ooh.
So, can we make this faster? And if we bifurcate the ADUs and the multifamily, could the ADU part go faster?
So we have, we have bifurcated them, so ADUs would occur first, but we've built in now four community meetings and a planning commission study session, and we have adoption hearings. So I, I don't know that we could compress it down any quicker and still have the level of community engagement that is currently proposed.
I guess I would take ADU odds light at this point over what we have. So it's my thought. If, if there's anything we can do to make this go faster, I mean, we just get less ADUs, like, look what I just saw in Santa, Santa Lucia yesterday. So that's my thought. All right, public comments, please? Thank you, Marnie. Great presentation.
Nancy Toomey. I vote along the lines of the concerns that Hans raised. I'm a huge proponent of ADUs continuing to align to whatever is the look and feel of the primary residence, so add me to that list. Thank you.
Anything else, Nancy? You're, you're a valued contributor here. All right. Anyone else? Anybody online?
Yeah.
Good.
Maria Roos, go ahead.
Hello, Council. Thank you, Marnie, for that presentation. I would like to bring up a couple concerns I have. One is, I understand the ADU light, and I agree with that approach.
Maria, can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, sorry, I'll raise my volume. I usually speak too loud. That's why I was trying to limit it. Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Good enough.
Okay. I'll raise it more. Okay, so I have a couple comments, or one is a question as well. The first comment is, since we decided to bifurcate, sort of speaking, if I can call it that way, by having a line for ADUs of eight months and a line for multifamily, multi-use for eight months, I would say, why make the ADU so long? It doesn't seem to justify, based on the fact that they have to mirror or imitate or looks like the original house or the, or the house that they belong to. So I would say we ought to consider reducing that. My other comment was more related to, I thought we were going to in the direction of reducing the cost, not increasing the cost. So we went from $180,000 to now $112,000. So I would like to understand kind of why are we doing that in that regard? Why are we increasing the cost? That would be my second question. And a comment in general, and I, I will ask it tomorrow, Marnie, and this is a little bit sidelined, is from the Housing Element. You said that the decision to amend is going to extend our response to that to June. You mentioned June of 2027. I think we ought to address that in this discussion with multifamily use units, because I think if this is about multifamily use designs as well, we ought to accelerate that more than ADUs, in my opinion, since ADUs have not been used to solve the housing element issue. Those are my three comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. I'll ask, answer your, your concern about price. I, I'll speak for the other council people, and Chip, I think, that I was fully expecting it to come back about this price, because what we asked for last time was more public engagement, and I think that's what they gave us. So I think, I think the consultant came back with exactly what we were asking for. Marnie, would you agree with that? Okay. She's shaking her head yes. All right, good. Let's bring it back for discussion. If there isn't, if there's nobody else online, I see. Correct? Okay. Let's bring it back. Hans, you want to keep your discussion going about the styles? Do you think we need to... Do you think we need to exhaust that discussion before we turn Marnie loose with this?
I think maybe you all can help me, help me think it through for a second. So I'm still, I'm still thinking about, um, I guess Marnie.
If you could come to the mic and just remind us about, um, you would be required, anyone would be required to use objective design standards? Would they have an option to opt out if their home did not fit one of the accepted styles? Let me think about that.
And, and if they did, I'll, I'll add to that question because it's part of the answer. And if they do, does that mean they can do whatever they want? Or do they have to go through the standard process where we can say, we want it to look like your fairy tale house? To some extent.
So with ADUs, right, state law says that we cannot use any discretion on ADUs. We have to review and approve them ministerially. We can only use objective design standards. So our goal is to develop objective design standards so that we can control the design of ADUs as they go through the building permit process. Um, I don't, I don't see any reason why we couldn't offer, um, an avenue by which an applicant can choose a discretionary process. I don't think we can require them to go through that, but we can certainly offer it if they want to, to deviate. Um.
So you're saying they have to, they have to either choose from the menu in the odds document? Or they could choose to go through some discretionary process which supersedes the state's requirement?
I mean, we, we can explore that as an option. Um, if we adopt the odds and they don't follow the odds, we deny their ADU. Like that's.
It's an interesting dilemma.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I th- I thought we had this discussion last month and I thought that I'd asked, and I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I thought that we had, uh, we, you know, part of this process was that there was a tract so that, um, you know, and, and I'm not going to use this word pejoratively. I'm just going to use this word. So let's say someone comes in and they build a fancy house. And, and they decide with their fancy architect that the fan, you know, the, uh, the, the three objective design standards or however many we have are not fancy enough for the fancy house. So I thought that, um, last month, we, we had the discussion that the fancy architect could bring the fancy ADU design to, uh, the planning commission. And could still use the sort of the square footage that has been sort of promised them by the state. But opt out of the objective design standards and go through the planning commission route to get the fancy, um, to get the fancy, um, ADU approved under the sort of the, the state ground rules, but not with the right of, not with the, like, the right to do whatever they wanted. Is that, um?
I, I think we can create that path where they can choose. We just can't require it.
Right, but we, we had the discussion like five minutes ago about historic resources. And so presumably, you know, I'm not sure what you're doing with historic resources now. Like do, like if someone comes, if someone with a historic house comes up and they want to put an ADU on, what, what does staff do with that now? Do they send it to the HRB? Do you just make a gas and approve it or not? Or am I not supposed to ask that question in public?
No. We, we follow the typical process. So we, we do an evaluation. We call it a phase two report.
Uh huh.
So it goes to a qualified consultant, one of our contract consultants. They do an analysis of the, the ADU. Um, and they produce a report as to whether or not the ADU as proposed um, is consistent with historic preservation standards um, or not. And it just, it follows the, the same, the same process.
So if the consultant comes back and they say the ADU for this, you know, historic house follows the standards, then staff will prove it without it showing up. So the historic evaluation part of the sort of normal design process here happens, but, but the house will not show up at, the, the ADU will not show up at the HRB or the planning commission. You'll just approve it over the counter. Is that?
It'll still, yeah, it'll still go through the building permit process.
Yeah, but
Yeah.
No more. So, so the subjective part of that is the, sort of the supposedly objective part of, does it fit the historical? Does it fit those standards that you talked about? There's no, there's no other review past that.
It would be a staff level design review.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Tony? Are you there?
Yes.
Could you, could you, do you see the, the dilemma we have with this? Could you help us out? You see this in a lot of other places like Santa Barbara. Maybe you can help because I'm a little fuzzy on this and in terms of where this is going because we're trying to solve a problem and I'm not sure we're going to solve the problem if they could still go off and do whatever they want.
Yeah, uh, thanks, thanks for the opportunity to answer the question. So, uh, first of all, uh, I want to just get back to the, uh, question about what happens if they don't meet the standards. There were a couple of different, um, options, um, talked about there and, and they're all accurate. But what happens more often than not is cities write into their, into the standards. They say, um, if you do not meet the standards, you have elected to go through a discretionary review process in this city. It's, it's not just a straight denial. Some say you're denied and you have to reapply. But a lot of cities just say by the fact that you are not meeting the standards, you have chosen to go through a discretionary review process. That's one, uh, piece of information I want to give you. Second piece is that, um, you know, exactly the, uh, uh, example that the council member gave right now about the fancy house and fancy designer. Uh, that, uh, was a very big concern. Well, it's a very big concern in a lot of cities, but in, in high, high profile architecturally oriented cities like, like Carmel and Santa Barbara is very, very, um, very, very important. So what they've done in those places is, is, is they've said it's an opt-in. So the law simply says that if you have a qualifying project, which is two or more units, and if you're adding affordable housing and any other thing that, that deems you qualified under the state law, then you have the right to, to go through, um, this, uh, ministerial approval. Meaning the, the process cannot apply subjective standards to your project. So the applicant can opt out of that. And that's the way we did it most recently in Santa Barbara. The applicant had the, um, yeah, has the opportunity to opt out of that and go discretionary. So, um, just wanted to clarify that. Um, and then on the issue of styles, I just wanted to, to offer that we're, we're very, very aware that there are probably twenty styles in Carmel. Uh, depending on how fine you, you to find them, how finely you define them. Uh, the reason that we've only been talking about three s- style groups with six total styles in them is simply budget. It's not because we don't see them, not because we don't think they're important. If, if the council wanted to do more, it's simply a matter of budget. And I don't mean to diminish budget here to that level. I'm simply saying that's the only reason it isn't being addressed more, um, robustly. And so we totally see it. So, um, if you wanted to add a style, there's a, there's a, an additional style, um, uh, row in the additional items on the budget table, uh, that we would be happy to add additional styles to, to the scope. But that's the only reason that it's, it's that way. It's not for any others.
As you go through the process of doing the three styles that we're paying for, are you going to bump into styles that we're not covering and document that at all? And say for an extra ten thousand dollars, I could do this other style?
Exactly, yes. So in, in the first, um, the first tasks, uh, I can't remember the number at the moment. My screen is not letting me see my scope here. Uh, but early on, very, when we go and do the field visit and documentation, the, the DNA that Marnie was describing, that's what we're going to do is we're going to do a lot of measuring, a lot of photographing, and a lot of looking at, uh, your historic, uh, resources documents. And then comparing what we read to what we find. And then asking the question, okay, so we have six total styles available to deploy here. We can, we can do that in three style groups in the following way. And after we do that field visit, we'll have a very clear recommendation for you on what, uh, styles to pursue in terms of how to use your, your budget right now. And those six styles in which, uh, we found that aren't fitting neatly into those three style groups that we recommend that you consider adding.
So you basically go after the low hanging fruit, the, the styles that cover a vast majority of the, the houses in town?
Well, yeah, and again, the, yes. And, and here's the complication is, is the budget that is, is trying to deal with six total styles. Again, we see, we know that there are far more. That, that's not a question. But the budget that we're, we're able to use for six styles is having to do double work of, you know, the, the many styles that you have in the houses and the very prevalent styles that you have in your downtown. As opposed to styles for the downtown that are maybe not as prevalent in as, as, as the styles in your neighborhoods.
Is, is a number like ten thousand dollars a style reasonable?
I think.
Is that in the ballpark?
Yeah, I think we had it at fifteen on the budget table.
Okay. It's just good for us to know in case we, you want to come back and and want to bump this up. So at some point, I, I'm maybe a little naive on this. I'm not on the planning commission like Bob was. At some point, do these objective design standards get morphed into something that can be applied to our normal discretionary process to make things easier and faster for, for people that are applying?
Yeah.
So this is, this is an investment in that as well?
Yeah, and, and nobody's done that yet, but yes, that is always talked about. And I think cities just don't do it because they, um, they, they just are too busy to think about it or, you know, whatever other reason. But yes, for the, and I would say it can be nuanced because you might not want to apply it to everything. But things that it makes sense for your city, it certainly is a, a good way to think about using that.
Okay, that was kind of my question. I mean, once, isn't it kind of, isn't it kind of like a formula, right, when we have these examples? And we come across a style that's not particularly, it's not specifically identified. We've got the example right there. Again, if we want the ADU to mirror the architectural designing characteristics of of the main dwelling, can't we just point to elements from the main dwelling and say they need to be applied without having to go through uh, a, you know, more formal, um, that, you know, design analysis of each.
Sort of, sort of the opposite of what I just asked. I mean, you've already got it there. Like what makes that house, that house? And how can we use the state guidelines to, well, I don't know. It's your business. You know, you can answer that question.
Certainly.
No, I don't know. I've, I've got comments for it.
Okay. Would you like me to respond to that or something else?
Go ahead and then Bob's got a question.
Yes, certainly you can do that. The, the issue becomes is what you're applying, is it what you're asking an applicant to apply objective and clear and measurable? And, and so there, yeah, you have a formula. You could say, hey, the things that stand out are roof pitch, the depth of an eve, the style of an eve, the details of an eve. Those are really big determinants in how a style comes across. In addition to how windows are oriented, how, how their proportions and their detailing. Those two things are huge. And then there are a lot of other things that go from there. So yes, there, there is a formula in terms of the topics. But you have to have those topics identified in a clear, measurable way. For example, you, if, if, uh, rafter tails or exposed rafters are important to a particular style that you're wanting to, to, uh, produce, then you need to say what you want out of the rafter. How, how wide does it have to be? How deep the, how long does it have to be away from the buildings? Um, how, how tall, how thick, all those things. And, uh, whatever isn't specified, the applicant, uh, can assume that they can fill that in with however they want to respond.
Picking back on, on Chip's comment, could we pay you every time someone comes in for an ADU to develop an odds document for that house and say, here are the odds? Here's the odd document you have to use for that, your ADU?
If, if time wasn't a factor, yeah, uh, we.
But then you could do that and that would still meet the state law?
Uh, yeah, if it was clear and measurable, yes.
Interesting. All right, go ahead, Bob.
Um, first off, I'm going to concur just to move this along, um, because I, I think we're trying to run, sort of shape the project without letting the project go. Um, and I'm, I'm kind of a grumpy Gus on this one, but before I go there, um, what I am seeing, having sat on the planning commission for a while, is that objective design standards could clearly make our processes, you know, more predictable and repeatable. Um, and could absolutely make outcomes quicker and, um, and, and again, more predictable. So I'm not against them and, and I think I kind of was coming in, but now that I've seen some, um, to your point, that they, they could have merit across the board. Um, that said, uh, this is a result of a state mandate that came down and is unfunded. And now what we're discovering is that, um, you know, if we try to polish that mandate into something that actually fits into the city of Carmel, we'll spend five hundred thousand dollars doing. Um, um, because they have no, they don't care. They just, unfunded mandates, they just say go. And that, um, we do have a lot of styles here. Um, and the real dilemma is, uh, how, how, can you make the statement, make it look like the main house objective? And a thought is that you could have an objective requirement that at least X, I'll call, say, five design elements of the main house must appear on the ADU. And then perhaps you'd come up with a, a sort of an objective smorgasbord of um, design features or design elements that you can, that you could pick from, you know, roof form. Um, you know, window shape, color, siding. And, and then it's up to the applicant to pick the five or the seven or the 10, whatever it is. Um, and I understand as a result of that, you might end up with you're, you're painting, you're, you're sort of painting the, um, uh, craftsman style ADU, um, to look like a fairy tale ADU. Um, and sort of a Frankenstein, but I think that's the worst case. I think in general, you might find, find something there. I'll remind us of what I said last time. I, I still think ninety percent of auxiliary drilling units will be in somebody's backyard and largely invisible from the street. Um, and, uh, uh, that I think we're, we're already spending a lot of time and money um, tr- trying to meet this mandate. Um, I'm sorry, we have actually added time, uh, to this process. And I'm sorry we've added more money to this process, but let's please not add any more time or any more money to it. Um, and just get on with it.
I sense a motion coming.
I have some comments that I think are relevant. So.
Almost.
Um, I think, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I agree with almost everything that Bob said with the exception of the, well, with the exception of the time and money thing, with the exception of the money thing. I think it's important, um, you know, in all the questions we were asked, we were asked about the second set of adoption hearings. And I think it's important to separate the, um, the ADU process from the multifamily process. Um, I think that, you know, I think it strikes me that the only thing these two things share in common is the language of deck, objective design and development standards. And I think that two smaller hearings, two smaller processes and two smaller, um, two smaller hearings will lead to a much better outcome in terms of having two sets of design guidelines that fit the character of the town. Um, we're asking a lot, you know, you're asking a lot of the planning commission and of us and of the public to go through this process as it is. And I think that breaking the, breaking the project down even more distinctly than you have into two sub projects, I think that that, um, will lead to better outcomes for, for, for both halves. So I'm a, I'm a, I'm a pretty strong, I'm a pretty strong believer in that. Um, I agree with, uh, Ms. Roos's comment about the order, whether we want to do the ADU or the housing element. I, I wrote that question down and I wasn't sure whether I was going to address it or not. Um, I agree with what she says about the, um, you know, the sort of time-based nature of the multifamily housing, objective design and development standards. Um, but I think we have a real problem with the ADUs and I, and I would, I would still elect to do the ADU part of the process first, like as, like as, like as is outlined in the presentation. I would still elect to do the A D U part of the process first, like as, like as, like as is outlined in the presentation, rather than um doing the multifamily stuff, uh, rather than doing the multi-family first. Um, my, my, two more comments, my uh next comment is, I still believe that if the city required, and this is a comment for um, the, the legal part of this process, I still believe, I continue to believe, that if the city required A D Us to be approved either before or after the main residence of the house, we would have much better design outcomes. Um, I think that there's been a lot, there are a lot of issues, I think, with uh planning commission hearings where the, the house and the A D U are sort of approved at the same time. There's a lot of unintended consequences between moving the house and moving the A D U forward or back on the lot. And it leads to a lot of problems with the streetscape and a lot of problems with the neighbors. And I really think we could solve that problem if we required people to do the, if we required applicants to do either the A D U with the house that's already on the lot or required them to um get approval for the A D U after their main house was correctly sited on the lot. So the main house sited in the middle of the lot and the A D U fit in around the house. Um, as uh, as Bob was saying, you know, mostly in the back. Um, you know, I, I think that that, I think that that change in the way that we do A D Us, which could be um put into law, would, would lead to significantly better outcomes in the way that A D Us face the, face the neighborhoods. And finally, you know, something that uh Marnie put, and I'm, 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 I'm gonna pick on Marnie a little bit, um, but, but not too much, uh, Marnie put something in the um, in the, um, do you have a copy, in the, in the guidelines, um, do you have a copy of the presentation?
I don't have one, but I can.
Let me, I have it, I have it up, I can find it. Marnie put something in the guidelines, um, in the, in the presentation. Um, let me see, here it is, in the present, in Marnie's presentation for today. Um, she, she has a slide in there, it's a, the, the subjective versus objective slide, I think it's the uh, I think it's the fourth guideline, I think it's the, it's either the third or the fourth slide. And I think this is really sort of illustrative of um, a little bit of, yeah, you just go down, um. That's the Mills Act, um, that's next, we're all waiting for that. Yeah, that's right. So if you look at this, if you look at this presentation, you know, the last one, the facade should be visually interesting and the front of the building must use three different materials. You know, that really rankles me because I don't know where this has come from. Like, and I was looking at, you know, as I've been sitting here, I've been looking at the residential design guidelines, which are the bible of how our design is supposed to be done. And if you look at the, if you look at the final details guidelines for building design, um, it says on page six, it says key principles of architectural design. And item number one is keep the design simple. You know, we're supposed to be a community of houses in the forest, we're not supposed to be a community of interesting houses. That does, I don't know where this has appeared, I don't know how this has become instantiated in our process, but that thought, the front of the build, the facade should be visually interesting, is not in our design guidelines. It says, keep the design simple, promote the diversity of styles, you know, within a block, and be consistent within an individual building, like, those are the three foundations of our, you know, of our design guidelines. And I hope that when we go into this process and we talk about the way that we are turning subjective guidelines into objective guidelines, that we actually go back to the, the documents that are supposed to define what our community is. And we draw the subjective, we draw these subjective things from these guidelines, not from wherever we are now, whatever's being said now, however we like to build these fancy houses, and maybe that's why I use the word fancy, however we build these fancy houses or whatever we do. Because I think um, we have sort of lost our roots here and, you know, in terms of our building, you know, buildings within a forest, buildings that are subjugated to the forest and all that. And I think that this is sort of an example, this is sort of an example of how we have sort of lost that. So I hope as we go into this process, um, I hope as we go into this process, that the subjective things that we're trying to get rid of are actually these subjective things that are, that are listed in our design guidelines. And they're not from, they're not from the lore or whatever it is that the planning commission says now. We have a set of guidelines, and I think we should try to go back to, you know, through this process, we should try to go back and remind ourselves of what those guidelines are. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Great points, uh, Bob, you ready to make a motion?
I haven't made comments yet.
Where have you been the whole time?
Just quiet in my corner here.
Just trying to move it along.
I know, they're pretty short.
Good.
Um, so one, I am glad that we did add some community meetings, and I certainly hope that the community does take advantage of that opportunity to participate in those. I will just throw the, throw this out there, Bob, I do agree, we can't, you know, turn this into a five hundred million dollar project where we're just discussing it rather than actually starting to do it. But potentially, if we wanted to take out one meeting um for the A D Us, we could add one style for the A D Us. It's almost an even swap if we're interested, um, because Hans, I do share your concerns, as I did last time, about, you know, getting it down to three style groups. I, I don't think the style issue is gonna be as important with the um, multi-family and the mixed-use commercial, but I think it is more of an issue with the A D Us, but just throwing that out there. Um, I would prefer to adopt the phase one A D Us as soon, as soon as it's done because it's so important to get that done and get it done right and, and get that um into action. Um, I do definitely agree that we should encourage the A D Us to be in the same style as the existing house, um, to make things easier, more architecturally compatible and coherent. Uh, and I'm very glad uh that the representative, Mr. Perez, um, told us last time that he's not only familiar with our community and its unique qualities, but he's been a frequent visitor, so I think that will be very helpful. Um, and I also encourage everyone from the Opticos team to spend as much time as possible boots on the ground in Carmel to really capture the uniqueness and special qualities of our village. But I do agree, we need to move on with this and get it going.
Very good.
I, I have one last area of fuzziness that, since we have Mr. Perez on the line, I was wondering if, if maybe he could clarify this. It, it made me feel a little bit more comfortable that um, he basically said we could sort of generically have, it sounded like generic objective design standards that say that, you know, it needs to match the house, and do we still have Mr. Perez on the line? Um, but my question was just how exactly does that work? So those essentially just become, um, they're not style-specific, but they're just sort of a, sort of a general overarching guiding principle in the objective design standards? Or is it if the, if the home doesn't match one of these styles, it falls to these generic principles? Just tell me mechanically how it works.
Yeah, so first of all, it's, it's something I'm, I'm reacting to, we've never done that. I'm just saying that I think we could figure that out and say, if a style isn't available to turn to, or, or let's say, we have six styles and, and the applicant chooses one of those styles, um, the applicant would then be required in this case to default to um, this set of, of instructions that would say, okay, you have to do this to your eaves, this to your roof, et cetera, like I was mentioning. Um, so we would have to develop a, a, a menu or a set of instructions that are style-neutral, but point the applicant to features on the existing house. So do more, if your, if your house has a pitched roof, you know, what, what pitches it? You know, asking the, the question, and they would have to produce information that then would uh, put them down a path of certain choices they would have to make uh, to uh, to develop a design that was compliant with it. I'm just, I'm thinking out loud in response to your question, and that, that's how I think we would build that.
No, that's very, that's, that's a great clarification, so essentially, there's still an objective design standards land. It's just, it's non-style, it's just style-neutral.
Right.
Potentially, yeah, okay, that's very interesting, thank you.
I wanna, I wanna thank you, Tony, for being so willing to uh, to be open in your responses to us, it's, it's impressive.
I, I make a motion that um, to accept the resolution that's been provided us in our packet by staff with two um additions to it. The first is that um staff be directed to pursue with the A D U um odds um in priority over the, the multifamily or in sequence uh before the multifamily, recognizing that their economy's a scale um of doing some things at the same times. I, I don't wanna tie your hands um there, but that, that, I, I think we've expressed that that's more urgent. Um, and then secondly, um, direct staff to work with the consultant to attempt to create um some form of objective model uh, to um ensure the A D U is built um in a similar design to the um main house. And perhaps pursuing something like I, I had suggested, where it's just based on, you know, some number of design elements. And I'm, and, and again, I'm not gonna restrict you by trying to get too specific with the resolution, but um if that's possible, I think it could be helpful and we might invent some new ground. Um, and I'm sure Nova, you will make that fewer words in the resolution.
I'll second that.
I have some ques, I have some questions about the motion. Um, does a motion include the, the second set of hearings that I've asked for to get the A D Us um approved? Sort of, so we can, let's say, approve the A D Us in eight months rather than sixteen months at the end when we do both sets of object, objective design standards?
Tony, what do you think about that? How do we do that?
With, so, so there, it's called out, right, I mean, I think, Tony, I think it's called out in the presentation that there's a cost increase for that. And I said earlier that I was willing to, I was willing to pay the eight thou, six thousand or eight thousand dollars to have the, to have the second set of, to have the second set of uh approval hearings and, and pull the A D U stuff forward. So, so.
I've heard a lot of positive comments about moving the A D U decision as quick as we can.
Well, I heard, I saw when Bob was talking, and that's why I'm asking you. When, when Bob was talking, when he was making his motion, he said hold the A D Us forward, but I couldn't tell whether that was, whether that was the hearings due or just, I mean, they're already pulled forward in the process.
Do you wanna put it in the motion and actually execute it? Is that already in, Tony?
Well, so when I get, when I made the motion, I was not specifically making it to add any cost. Um, so, so if what you're saying adds cost, that's not in my motion. Um, it was really a sequencing comment, um, that, that lets get through the A D Us more quickly than the other, than the others. That A D Us are, more time is of the essence.
And my, so my issue, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, my issue is that the project is already sequenced that way, that we're gonna do the A D Us first, but when we get done, according to the project plan that's in the packet, when we get done with the A D Us, that's gonna be put on the shelf for six months while the, while the multifamily stuff happens. And so that was called out as a, as an additional set of adoption hearings so that we could have a, a set of adoption hearings at eight months for the A D Us and then sixteen months, I'm kind of making up those times, sixteen months for the multifamily stuff. And I would like to add, at cost, at some cost, the A D U, the, the A D U hearings. I think that that would, um, I think that that would give us eight fewer months of unregulated A D Us, which is the situation we're in now, and I think that that's a price worth paying.
So I, I'll amend my motion accordingly.
Let, let's, let me ask Tony, Tony, can we do a hearing at the price that we have now and get A D Us in, in, to execute so we can start using it?
We would, we would need to move the hea, we have two hearings um allocated in the budget, so we would need to move one up and hopefully only use one. And if we use both of them, then we don't have two for the multifamily at the end.
Well, you have two hearings in the budget, presumably because you have a planning commission hearing and then a city council hearing, so I don't see how, you're not gonna use both hearings, correct? Like, you are, like, I, honestly, I'd be surprised if you only need two. But I think, I think at the minimum, according to the plan I've outlined, you would need four hearings, a planning commission hearing and a, and a city council hearing after the A D U part of the project, and then a planning commission hearing and a city council hearing at the end of the project.
Got it, so Tony, how do we do that?
Yeah, the way that.
I, I think I've heard general agreement that we wanna do this as quickly as possible, so, go ahead.
Yes, so the way the council member was describing that, I'm sorry, I can't see your name on the plate. Uh, we would need to add two hearings at um, at month eight, as, as uh he was describing, when we're done with the A D U work, so we'd have to wait for the multifamily work to be adopted.
How do we do that, how do we make a motion on that? Do you, can you give us a, a estimate of how much that would cost?
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
So in the proposal on, so on page, there's a ca, there's a chart of additional costs in the proposal, um, do you remember? Uh, I'm, I'm kind of flipping through it, but there's a cost, and I think it was, um, I think it was four thousand dollars a hearing.
That's correct.
If I remember right, um, so it would increase the cost, increase the cost by eight thousand dollars.
So we're at two twenty.
So, so I guess the amendment I would make is to add the two more hearings and increase the, the um cost price not to exceed to two twenty. Um, and still ask staff and the consultant to continue to find ways not to spend all that. For example, if we have a public meeting and nobody comes, you might not do three more. But that's not really part of the motion.
Do you have, do you have, Nova and Chip, do you have what we need? All right, we have a motion?
And second.
All right.
Okay, so this is the revised motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff, for adding that.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temdels?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmo?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Tony, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, look forward to working with you. All right, so I'm gonna juggle things around here a little bit, I'm sorry I didn't catch this in the draft when I had it, when Nova sent it to me, which is in our new policies. Uh, but uh since we have a representative and a friend of mine, cause I'm on the board of Regen here, Zoe, and uh, who else is here?
Emily.
Emily's here. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to the uh M O U for uh Regen because I think it's gonna move quickly, I'm hoping, and then they can be on their way back to where they live somewhere. So let's just go ahead and try to get that out of the way.
All right.
I'm getting it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Um, so before, we have before you the resolution twenty twenty-five oh eight six M O U with Regen for the franchise um planning. Currently, the city maintains a franchise for solid waste collection and that agreement and R F P process started in twenty-ten. The, um, during that process, Greenwaste was selected but as our vendor uh from um seven out of the nine uh Regen members. And that contract is um expected to expire in twenty-thirty. The timeline is that the sense it is going to be expiring in twenty-thirty, we need to start planning for that franchise um process now. And um, so we had a subcommittee, a, a technical advisory committee uh, uh, go through this process. And um, looking at it as a regional, regional approach, um, I stated the different benefits of looking at it um for cost efficiencies and just a number of reasons of why it's good to work as a region to um, to plan this franchise agreement. And uh, the consultant selection process consisted of, um, we sent out uh the, the R F P to four different firms, and we received just one um proposal back that was from H F and H Consultants. And it was reviewed by the selection committee, and um, it was also recommended uh by the, by the committee. Uh, we currently work a lot with H F and H Consultants on a lot of our franchise planning. Um, and the scope includes public surveys, stakeholder meetings, as well as council presentations. The memorandum of understanding was drafted by Regen, and it was reviewed by the legal councils from the many different um agencies. And um, it outlines what our cost-sharing agreement is, what the responsibilities and deliverables are, the timeframe for the process, as well as the city's um share of costs over the five-year planning period, which is expected to be seventy-six thousand three seventy-four. That's equally shared among the seven different agencies. Um, and that's because it's not based on population, like some of our agreements are based on the population, but this is overall planning, and so it's not really a population-based. the population, but this is overall planning and so it's not really a population-based way to look at it. So the recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2025-086 and approve the MOU. And we do have Zoe Schotz from Regen here, as well as HF&amp;H Consultants, we have Emily Hansen here. So if you have any specific questions from them, they'd be happy to answer anything. And that completes my presentation.
Nice to have you here presenting to us tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody have a question?
Hans? Any color on only why one complete submission?
I, I think probably Zoe might have a better idea of why there was only one that came through. I wasn't on the selection committee myself, but she probably would be able to answer that.
And then before she, before she takes the mic from you, you said we, we work with HF&amp;H on a lot of franchise planning. Can you just kind of elaborate on that?
So HF&amp;H currently consults with Regen and they also are part of our, they attend all of our technical advisory committee meetings. And I think anytime there's a Regen board meeting, if there's any questions with franchise planning, they're one of the, you know, top consultants locally. I think they're based out of the Bay Area. And so anytime there's questions that I have, a lot of times I'll go to HF&amp;H Consultants and ask them, you know, can you clarify in our agreement or our services agreement what this means? And so they've been providing these services for a long time.
Zoe?
I have a, I have a question. May I, just for-
Just for her.
Just for you. HF&amp;H, don't they do the consulting work that we, every year we pass a rate increase for green waste? Isn't, doesn't, isn't HF&amp;H the consulting company that audits?
Yes.
Like the green waste numbers and tells us that the green waste numbers are good or bad or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, they're like a third party.
Do they do that for other jurisdictions too?
They do, yeah. They're, they're a rather large firm that does it for many other areas as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Zoe? We did have a significant discussion at the board about this issue.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thanks for moving this item up there. Really appreciate that. Yeah, to your question, council member, we submitted, we requested proposals from four different agencies, but solid waste franchise planning is a very specialized service and we do need someone within the California state that knows California state law as well. So we initially thought we were going to get two, maybe three proposals back. We had one very interested firm who ultimately ended up not submitting. We had someone say they were going to submit for half of the proposal, but not the other half, which doesn't do us much good because we have two different avenues we can take. We can eventually, after public input, look at going out for RFP or we can continue to negotiate with the current provider. So only bidding on half of that process wouldn't have done us much good not knowing which direction we're going to take at this point. So ultimately HF&amp;H was the sole provider. To make you feel a little more at ease with this process, yes, we have a lot of experience working with HF&amp;H Consultants over the course of this last 10-plus years on the existing agreement. As well, the selection committee that reviewed this proposal was made up of staff members from three different jurisdictions. So Regen is not a party to this agreement, nor are we trying to get involved. We're just really coordinators of this effort. So we want to make sure that the city's staff representatives and the legal council and elected officials are all comfortable with this process. We're just trying to coordinate that process for you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it sounds like you were involved. Did you have any color on that?
No, I did question some things and I questioned the population part of it. I was trying to negotiate that so we could save a little money. It's got us down to like 40, 50,000. But in the end, we all felt that this was the fair thing to do.
Yep.
It's a lot of work. I mean, this is like a half million dollar contract really overall.
Indeed.
It's not nothing. These things get pretty complicated. And, you know, I just love the fact that they plan so far ahead. We're not doing it at the last second.
Right, right.
And, and we might find that we want to change, you know? It's probably not likely, but they're going to tell us.
That'll be part of the process.
Yeah. Zoe's, Zoe's team does a great job. I feel very comfortable with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, do you have anything to add? You think you were properly, were you properly represented here?
I'll make-
Why don't you come on up since you're here? Come all the way here.
I'll feel a little bit more comfortable.
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Emily Hansen. I'm with HF&amp;H Consultants, comma, now. Previously was with Green Waste Recovery. So I actually sat on the other side of the table back in when the original proposal was put together by Green Waste Recovery at that time and sat on the other side negotiating every one of the seven franchise agreements. So my hope is, one of the reasons that you got one solid proposal for this was we've done a really good job here and that's pretty well-known, I think, throughout the region and we're excited to be able to do this work. I'm excited to be able to support you guys in a different capacity. I spent many an evening standing here at the podium answering lots of questions as we rolled out the transition plan. And our intention is really to give you guys and every one of the member agencies the most opportunities to see what the competition is. So as Zoe suggested, there's an opportunity to kind of split off where we're going to look at what are the public, what's the public interest say, what each of the councils say, the jurisdictions. And one opportunity is to negotiate with Green Waste Recovery, another opportunity is to go out to a competitive procurement. And either of those, I think something that's really important for you all to know is, because this is a long-term process, the decisions that you're making now are not binding a council, a future council four years from now, for example, to any particular decision that's being made. So there is an off-ramp in a number of the different phases of the project. So if you were to decide to go forward and then you decided not to do a collaborative process in terms of, you know, if you wanted to negotiate with Green Waste Recovery or you wanted to go out on your own to procure these services, you have the opportunity to do that. So what you would be doing tonight is just really exploring and kicking off that regional planning process and definitely not handcuffing yourself to any particular decision in the future.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? A public comment first? Oh, we've done this question. Anybody have a public comment? Kenny? You have a public comment on, on this MOU?
I agree.
All right. That's Kenny's comment. He agrees. All right. Any, anybody online?
There's no hands raised on this.
All right. So we'll bring it back for discussion. Anybody have anything to say? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I moved to adopt Resolution 2025-086 approving an MOU with Monterey Regional Waste Management District, DBA Regen Monterey in support of franchise agreement planning.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dells?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmo?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, let's take a biopic break and then we'll get to the Mills Act next. Thank you, everybody.
It's yours, yeah.
You taking a bite?
Yes.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Is that it?
No, I couldn't.
I kind of wanted to-
Lady, what's that?
Was this something, something that I heard on the radio?
This is important.
It's-
Run that one.
It's the Apple iPad, a lot of the stuff.
It's the Apple, Kate, or the Apple people talks about.
Yeah, it's a, it's a-
Don't worry about it.
Okay.
You know what it's-
This is the Apple, uh, control.
I love an inch.
Just to bring somebody over.
What did you say you brought because you don't have it?
Well, I got it.
No, I'm just bringing it.
So I can connect to her.
It was taken out.
What?
Was that the, was that the one?
And then I added-
Yeah.
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 An inch.
Just to bring somebody over.
Well, I gotta go.
No, I'm just really.
So I can.
But just to.
Connect.
To her life here.
It almost took it out.
If we.
What?
It almost took it out.
Was that the. I was like. You want to do it then?
It was. It was. And then I added.
Everybody ready?
Reese, are we ready?
Give us a moment.
Okay.
All right, we're ready.
All right, we're back in session at four twenty eight. All right, we're gonna go to item eight, which is the second order of business. And it's to receive a presentation on the Mills Act, discuss potential policy amendment options, and provide direction to staff regarding the preparation of proposed policy modifications for future council consideration. I think we all know that this item's been under discussion for quite a while, resulting in putting the Mills Act on pause while some outstanding requests are pending. Today, hopefully, we can come up with a way forward, either continue the program as it was done historically, or some caveats, or to terminate it for new and existing contracts so we can eliminate uncertainty on the subject. I wanna, I wanna start off by saying there, there was some information that was provided before the interesting information, I might add, that was given to us this afternoon. And I know that we'd all put a lot of studying into this. So I know that information was useful to me and could have changed my opinion as to what I might wanna do. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna open this by saying because of that and because of other information that we're gonna discuss and the questions that come up. I, I'm not sure that we're gonna come up with a definitive answer today on what we're gonna do, but this has been put on so long, that, put off so long. I think we really just need to open the discussion, get us all back up to speed. Would you agree that that's a good way to couch this?
Yes.
Okay, good. So let's, let's go ahead and get the staff report on this pretty interesting subject. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, Anna Jeanette with Community Planning and Building, here to present a policy discussion on the Mills Act program. So again, as the mayor spoke, the intent of this presentation is really for the council members to receive a report. The last time this topic was discussed before City Council was a few years ago. So it's to get back everybody up to speed and then hopefully have a discussion that will then provide staff with direction on how to move forward with the Mills Act program. So a little bit of background, this information was in the staff report. In nineteen seventy two, state of California identified that we should have an economic incentive program to promote the rehabilitation and maintenance of historic structures. The Mills Act was born at that time. Again, it provides tax relief for monies to then go to the preservation and revitalization and also maintenance of historic properties. Mills Act is part of the California Code of Regulations. However, each local jurisdiction has the option to either adopt a program, not adopt a program, or include different program components. The one thing that is static is on how properties that fall under Mills Act, how their taxes are, are accounted for. And we also have Jerry Gap with the County of Monterey Assessor's Office in attendance via Zoom, should you have any technical questions relative to property tax and things of that nature. So some background for the city. The act was adopted in nineteen seventy two. However, locally, the Mills Act program was not adopted until two thousand and four. Between two thousand and four and two thousand and three, a few key things happened. One was in really two thousand and three, twenty three. The council decided to limit the amount of contracts within a three-year period to fifteen. Then late two thousand twenty three, the council adopted an urgency ordinance, which put in moratorium on accepting approving Mills Act contracts. At this point, staff would like to print, uh, present an errata to attachment six of the staff's, of staff's report. The, the columns and totals were incorrect in the first part of that spreadsheet. Total pre's act, total pre Mills Act contracts in twenty twenty four, twenty five were, would have been three thousand nine hundred, three, three hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five. Once Mills Act contract was applied, that taxable, or that tax revenue was reduced to three thousand, three hundred twenty thousand, four hundred and four, which is a total difference of just over seventy-six thousand dollars. A little bit on how taxes are assessed in two key components. I believe that came up in twenty twenty-three. So property taxes equal to one percent of the property's assessed value typically. The city receives six percent of that one percent, and schools receive sixty percent of that one percent. The, for the taxable, for the tax revenue of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, the total amount of taxes that the city received was seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one, as stated in the previous slide. And this just gives you the breakdown of what the schools portion was, cities portion, libraries, special districts, and the county of Monterey as a whole. This interest, this information is interesting. It has not, this information was not part of staff's report, so I can spend a little bit more time on this slide. And if council had any questions before moving forward, we could definitely go over it. So the staff report and much of the information on the presentation showed the tax, the tax revenue for twenty-four, twenty-five. But at the end of two thousand twenty-three, or early two thousand twenty-four, the City Council approved four Mills Acts, Mills Act contracts prior to adoption of that urgency ordinance. These included four residential properties and one commercial property. For the tax year of twenty-four, twenty-five, you can see that there is a difference or a loss, a net loss of two hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. I also wanna spend a little bit more time on this slide because one of the questions in twenty twenty-three was, do we wanna limit the land use? Should we only allow Mills Act contracts on residential properties and not allow them on commercial properties? If you look at the line items here, the, the area where there is a significant net loss is a residential property. So moving forward, if the council thinks about how many times does a residential property change hands versus how many times does a commercial property change hands? That may weigh into your direction as far as do we restrict land uses? Or maybe it, it weighs into what is a value cap that we want to have? Or should we just cap the actual revenue loss? And then so going into options, there are three that I'll touch upon. And then after those three, I'll go over some other options that the council can consider. One would be to issue non-renewal, limit the avenue, annual revenue loss, or establish, establish a value cap. So on non-renewal, contracts are limited, or contracts are at a ten-year period. And then each year that contract is renewed, which extends that ten-year period if a non-renewal is not filed. If the council chose to say we want to non-renew all existing contracts, we would be required to provide notification to the property owners. We'd also have to make sure we are monitoring things. And once the non-renewal is set up, I am not an expert in taxes, but there is a, there is a lowering of the actual benefit that's received. And hopefully Jerry can answer it. But basically, what we would have to do, what we would have to do, or the assessor's office does, is they look at the restricted value, what the current market rate value is, and then they do a factor based on year value. So if, if that rate includes rents and there's a fluctuation in rent, sometimes that could mean that their benefit is decreased by a lot, or it could be static, or it could go up, just kind of depending on all the other factors. But non-renewal does allow flexibility. Council can choose to non-renew, non-renew some of the older contracts, some of the newer contracts. It's basically up to, to council. One other option is to limit the annual loss. In two thousand twenty-three, the council gave staff direction to look at what Santa Barbara had in their program. So you can see on the table to the left, Santa Barbara has a, an annual loss limit of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So as, as I understand how their program works is once they hit that limit for that annual year, they will not accept any new contracts. I haven't, I haven't dug into the detail whether they are considering total loss for all contracts or total loss for the year prior. It would make sense to me, it would be, for us, for it to work for the city, it would be the total loss of all contracts put together. And then, then the council would have to figure what is, what's the appropriate number for the city of Carvel. Next is the value cap. Value cap is, value cap is interesting because a cap could be placed on the fair market value, even though the, the tax liability is not based off of the fair market value. But it, it, it provides council with some flexibility. Most of the jurisdictions shown on the, the table to the left show a different value for a residential cap and a commercial cap. County of Monterey, they allow the Board of Supervisors to make an exception or approve a contract if it goes over the cap value. If they find that there is a public need and necessity to approve a contract. And then the other options are limiting contracts to residential properties. Or you, or the council can find that doing a combination of a few will actually work better for the city. Like, we would put a value cap and also a cap on the revenue loss. And maybe there are some restricted land uses. Similar to what was done early twenty twenty-three, the council could also limit the number of contracts. So only five per year with a cap of two hundred and sixty thousand, and value cannot exceed five million. We could also adjust the qualifications. One of the questions asked in twenty twenty-three was, should we approve a Mills Act contract for a historic property if the horse, historic property was already rehabilitated? So person, purchase a property, they spend all the money, they rehabilitated it. And really what they need to do is to maintain it. Is, is that worth it to, to the city to approve a contract under that type of situation? One other option would be just to maintain the prohibition or moratorium. So quick cuts, quick summary. So over twenty years, we've had this program in the city. And we have a very, we have a robust historic preservation ordinance that already allows the city and specifically my department to ensure that there is protection of historic properties should any development be applied for. And fifteen of the Mills Act contracts that were approved, that information was in the staff report, the rest of the four are on that, the slide, and I can go back. So we have a total of nineteen. And this concludes my presentation. I'll just leave the questions up on the slide. If you have any questions to go over. I'd also like to note that we will just take all the comments. And prior to moving on to the next item, what I can do is just summarize those comments just to make sure that staff has captured everything.
All right, thank you. Questions? Go ahead, start, Bob.
Thanks, Anna. So I'm just struggling a little bit with the numbers. So this includes fifteen contracts, but does, it does not include the final four.
Includes fifteen contracts, does not include the final four, and that's for the tax year of twenty-four, twenty-five. The other four would.
And the, and the math was originally wrong.
Right, right.
But, but the net total loss of seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one is not reflective of including the, the other four contracts.
That's correct, because the, the other four is for fiscal year or tax year twenty, twenty-five, twenty-four.
All right, that's twenty, sorry, the print's so small, it was, it's twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right, right.
So if you produce this for this tax year.
It could fluctuate depending on the market rents for, for how the assessor's office identified. We could provide that information and can make it part of the administrator's report, just so you have it available if we don't have clear direction on how to move forward.
Second question is, what is the administrative overhead load for, for just keeping track of Mills Track, Mills Act contracts?
That's a very good question. I believe we could do a better job. Right now, what we do is receive a, a maintenance program is part of a contract once it's approved. And on an annual basis, staff receives receipts and information from the property owner showing this is what we've done for the year. There are approximately four current approved contracts that have went over the first, the ten initial, ten initial years. And in our code, it states that after that tenth year, we are supposed to be receiving a revised maintenance contract to say, you know, okay, our first ten years is what we did, the next ten years is what we will do. Of those four, none have been resubmitted, but the, the annual maintenance information has been.
So there's, it sounds like there's also a fair bit of administrative load on the applicant, or whatever we call them, the home, the property owner.
It's more.
They're doing the preparation for the submittal.
Right.
Every year, you're just taking it, but it's, it's something. It's, it's an effort. Last question. It looked like the Frank Lloyd Wright House was a significantly larger tax loss than anything else I've seen.
Right.
What drove that and the, and the size of that?
I, looking at the numbers, what I believe happened is that when the assessor's office looks at the fair market rate, they're looking at comparables. It's not the same as looking at a par, comparable to the, the sale market rate. So it's, it's off of rent. How much is a, I, I believe it's like.
Say it.
One, one bedroom, two, maybe one bedroom, one bath, one.
There's not a lot of comps, is what you're saying.
Well, they're looking at rental, rental, right? So then if that is significantly lower, that's what lowers the, the property tax.
Okay.
Maybe a good question for the Monterey person online.
Well, that's, what is the role of the county tax assessor in, in, or the oversight and administration of these contracts?
They provide the bill and they collect the money. So State Board of Equalization comes up with, this is how you value it, and this is the formula that you have.
So they run the numbers?
Yes.
Yes.
And they, and they collect the tax bill and distribute.
Okay, I'm out of questions.
I have some questions. Could you go back to this slide, the twenty twenty-four approved contracts?
I ran out of batteries.
Yeah, so that slide shows a loss of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in tax revenues.
For twenty-four, twenty-five, for just those four.
So to Bob's point, like I've circled the number, I think Bob was talking about it, was this one, right? Negative seventy-six thousand tax rate post Mills Act, this one? So this number, which was seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars in the red, is now gonna be three hundred and ten thousand dollars in the red. So, so last year, we issued seventy-five percent between these four houses, between these four properties. We, we bumped our tax rate, we bumped the revenues that everybody receives, the county and the schools, everybody receives by, we multiplied it by four. We went from seventy-six thousand to three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. That we, with that, the city is now responsible for forgiving in tax revenues.
He, yes, there, there could be a little bit difference, like I said, based off of the rent.
The scope is like, the order of magnitude is right.
That, that's correct. So then, one thing I think is important for council to think of is the sale of property. So once that sale of property occurs without the Mills Act, their tax, you know, their, their property taxes go up. And then once the Mills Act, once a contract is approved, it reduces down and it stays with, with the property. Up until a point that a contract is either extinguished or it goes through a law.
Okay, so I have some questions about this, some more questions about this slide. So I asked, I asked you to, and I have in front of me the, the staff report from last year, from nine-ten ninety-four. And actually, it's from, it's from March fifth, twenty twenty-four, which was the date of the City Council hearing, if anybody's interested and you're following along. And I just chose the first one on the list. And I just chose the first one on the list, two, three, two, oh, two, eight. And we went from thirty one thousand four hundred and forty eight dollars a year to four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars a year. So generally, when we see these contracts, we don't know how much the depre, how much the how much the reduction is going to be, but we always use like fifty percent, right? That's that's right, so.
Marty, Marty's, Marty's provided a range in the past, so do you make the assumption of fifty percent? Is Mr. Barron correct?
It's a good average.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything like that, like I was before. So this contract, which is near my house, so I actually didn't vote on it, resulted in a reduction of twenty seven thousand dollars a year in property taxes from thirty one thousand dollars a year to four thousand dollars a year. So I have, I have in front of me the maintenance plan. Like they that we went through, that we went through for our, for when when this hearing came up, when the other council members went through this. And and their maintenance plan, their ten year maintenance plan, the total value on this maintenance plan is eighty seven thousand three hundred dollars. So we're giving them a twenty seven thousand dollar a year break. And then we're, so two hundred and seventy thousand dollars over the course of ten years, they get, they get an abatement of their taxes. And in return, they're doing eighty seven thousand dollars of maintenance on their house. So they're a hundred and eighty thousand dollars short. So do we have a way of going back to like, well, not this property owner, but like other property owners? And and to be fair, the Frank Lloyd Wright House is the same thing. I mean, that 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 differentiation is a hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars a year. And I remember that hearing, I see Karen, I see Karen in the in the audience, like, we did not plan on a hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars a year in maintenance, we planned on a hundred thousand dollars a year in maintenance. And so that number, that number is a hundred and ninety eight thousand, so that's like two million dollars in property taxes foregone over the course of the ten years. Do we have any way of going back to the property owners and saying, hey, we didn't do a very good, very accurate job of predicting the contracts? And then extracting more maintenance out of them?
I don't know the answer. I mean, you're certainly, what you're hitting on, sir, is the fact that when we enter into these contracts, we don't know exactly what portion of the taxes will be abated by the assessor. So that's the black box. I, I, you know, we could look into this, we'd have to have Mr. Pyric and his firm look into whether, again, there's a vehicle for us after we enter into a contract to go back and say, you got more of a tax break than we thought you would, so you're going to have to increase the amount you're investing in the property. But we can look into that, sir.
So when I look at, this is the, this is the, this is a black and white, sorry, Bob. There's a black and white burnout of a of a piece of paper that was in the packet, we can hand that back to Bob. And when I look at the numbers, when I look at the numbers from from side to side, from from year to year, the residential pro, even the residential properties vary quite a bit. So if you look in the, if you look in the, like, if you go from the twenty twenty one tax year to the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two tax year, like, I'm just picking one, like, a lot of these values, like, doubled. Like, they go up and then they go, like, they doubled for a couple of years, but these are the taxes that the Mills Act property owners pay, which which you say, and I agree, I think is right, they they're based on the sort of imputed rents from the from the tax assessor. And then they go down again. So that's what we should expect every year, that the tax assessor does some magic in in Salinas and and these numbers really vary by this much, because these are pretty big differences to, you know, from from year to year. My next question for you is, you know, so let's let's take these properties on the screen. So these properties all went into effect this tax year, right? So we all just got our property, we all just got our property tax bills in the mail. And they're getting property tax bills that reflect these new numbers. I assume that's where these numbers came from. Their maintenance plan, so the Mills Acts contracts have ten year expiration. So we can only cancel, we can only give a notice of non renewal ten years before we actually want the contract to end. So we have to give them ten year warnings.
Yes.
And so every year, these contracts get extended. So if I go down this other list of contracts, there are contracts that are like five and six years old. So those contracts, which were like new in like twenty eighteen, have been through seven years of their contract, but every year they've been extended. So in twenty eighteen, when these contracts were approved, they had ten year maintenance plans. And so hopefully, we did a more accurate job of predicting the maintenance versus the property tax loss on those than we did on these two examples. Do as the contracts have, as the contracts have rolled over into new ten year terms, do we alter the maintenance plans? Like, so those contracts that were approved ten years ago, they they're going to continue to get these tax breaks for now seven more years. But we don't alter, as a matter of course, the maintenance plans for for what they do. And presumably, like, some of these things on this list, like the one I'm looking at, like roof and like, some of this stuff is like structural stuff and it's not maintenance stuff. So you even start to have to wonder whether there's really any maintenance left to do. Like, if they put their a hundred thousand dollars into their into their property, like, now we're just, now we're just foregoing these tax revenues. That's what it seems, is that, so we could fix that?
Yes, yes, so they, the code actually requires that after that tenth year, we require the applicant to submit a revised maintenance plan.
But we should really be doing that after the first year, right? Because there's a blank year at the end as these as these contracts roll over. Like, every year, another blank year is, every year, another blank year.
It stays ten years throughout the time.
Right, so we shouldn't make them do that, we shouldn't make, we shouldn't ask them to do that after ten years. We should ask them to do that like every year, because when we get to your ten years, we're sort of S O L.
That's a potential option.
We're still in the question mode, but.
So I have a question.
Great point.
Apologies, I have a, I have a question for the assessor. And I think it's the same question I asked last last time around. Is the assessor on the line?
He was, he was earlier.
Okay, so we'll try to get the assessor back on by the time we go back around.
I could text him, yes.
Okay, thanks, apologies. I can wait until later, ask my, my, asking the question I have.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and get the questions for Anna out of the way and then we'll go to the public.
Okay, go. I think I've got four. A couple of these might be quick. Does the Mills Act stay with the property? For example, number fifteen on the list is a Hugh Comstock designed house called Curtain Call that was just sold a few months ago. So does that, is that something that stays with deed?
It does, it does, and even if it sells at ten million dollars, that that tax stays with, that tax benefit stays with property.
Okay, another question is, if an applicant already starts work on a historic renovation, can they retroactively apply for a Mills Act? The reason I'm asking this, for example, is I know there's a gentleman who's very concerned, he's got a house near Seneca and he wants to do the windows, and while everything is on hold right now, i- if he was to start that work, can he retroactively apply, or it has to be once we get our program back?
That that option is currently not part of the program. And if that's something that the council wanted to do, then we should build that in.
Okay. My other question is, and and I'm trying to say this as gently as possible, I think Dale was was getting to this at the beginning. But there was so much misinformation that was not in our packet over the weekend for us as council, for the public. It really is fundamental, especially this, what we're looking at right now, this twenty twenty four. Is there any way that you can make us a new chart and incorporate it? And we can, I mean, it's almost like we're just registering it all in real time right now, but a lot of us, I think, would have really needed those numbers and just to be able to process everything. I don't know exactly what happened, but it really, it's so substantive, the material that was left out. I don't know, you know, I know we sort of talked about maybe having part of this hearing, but continuing it because I think it's really, it's fundamental to the issues that we're going to discuss and frankly, to some of the problems with this program to see these numbers, especially these four properties. My last question is, if you could just explain more about how this non renewal process would occur and what would happen to some of the properties that would be affected if we did that as a council, if that was part of our decision?
So the non renewal, sixty days prior to the the anniversary date or the end of the year, we would have to provide the property owner with a notice saying we are going to non renewal. We're not, we are not going to renew your contract. That draws the line of the sand and then that contract stays on the property for ten years before it expires.
If for some reason they did need more time and more extra work, would they then just reapply, or how would that work out?
They could reapply. There is also, so there are a number of things that can happen. If the the applicant says, you know, we just purchased this property, we don't have enough money, and you issued a non renewal five years ago, I'd like to reapply. Then they could reapply, but the, that would have to be, they'd have to wait until that contract has expired before we can approve it because they're still receiving some sort of tax benefit.
Okay.
Should the city find that a property is under contract and they are not maintaining the property per the maintenance plan, we could extinguish a contract and then there's like fines that are also associated to that. So there's a, you know, there are a couple of options on how to move forward, depending on the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Hans? Bob? So you said you can selectively cancel contracts, so we could, in this case, we could, on the Lopez one, we're surprised it's so much, so we could just send them a notice right now saying you're canceled in ten years?
That's my understanding, and I'd also like the city attorney to weigh on. If it, if it's just a single selection, I mean, if it, if all were canceled, I think it's a little bit easier.
I'm not picking on them, we can, we can go to each one individually and cancel, and we don't cancel. We could also say we're going to cancel all of them, we want to get out of this business.
That's my understanding.
Okay, so, but we can't, we can't do anything about, we're surprised at the twenty six thousand five sixty for the Cabin on the Rocks. We can't call up the the assessor and say, what the heck, that's like a lot less than we thought, can we talk about it? Our only option is to say, you've got ten years, you're going to get that money for ten years. Plus, you need to spend the money on the maintenance you were going to do. And and we can, can we do yearly inspections to make sure they're doing, spending the money? Or I noticed in some cities, they do it every five years.
Yeah.
Do we do inspections at all right now?
All we do at this point is receive the annual report.
From the homeowner?
From the homeowner.
But we don't go out
We'll verify if like the
We don't go out and say, did you really put in that retaining wall?
Well, they also should have received a a permit for that, so we would look at that information.
Didn't do the permit, you say, hey, you didn't do the permit, you were supposed to do it, is that going on?
Yes, that's supposed to be checked.
Those things could always be better, right, because we're busy, so. All right, this is pretty interesting, huh? It's complicated. All right, let's go out to the public and we're still waiting for Jeff's answer. Okay, you're going to do that while we're waiting. Hi there.
Good afternoon. You know, I think the Mills Act started out as a very good thing for people who had homes that they couldn't afford to fix and they had to sometimes sell them, you know, because it's expensive to renovate an historical home. Sometimes you have to have windows remade. You can't put in double pane windows that you might need. So there are a lot of reasons why the Mills Act happened. I think unfortunately, in a community like ours, with the cost of real estate, it has almost become a scam. It has become a monetized use that passes to another person when you sell. So it's almost something you can advertise, you can buy my house and get this great tax break. So I'm concerned. And I think, you know, other cities have put limits. The county, I think it's three million dollars for residential, five million for commercial. That's what San Francisco is, I believe, it might even be Santa Barbara. I think those limits are something that we should really look at. I don't think any money should go for landscaping or ordinary maintenance like all of us have to do in our homes. I think that's absurd. I got my property tax bill and it's quite high. And when I look at some of the property tax bills, I'm really kind of shocked, especially Cabin on the Rocks. The property should be visible to the public. We approved one on Visceno and it's behind like a twelve foot hedge. Nobody even knows it's there. There's no, as I can see, public enjoyment of that home at all. I do think there has to be a yearly report and an inspection on progress because I think what was just, I think you brought it up, Dale, that we don't know whether this stuff is even happening. And I wasn't sure, I got here a minute late, but that chart that said that the Cypress Inn is the same from this year to
It's actually more.
Yeah, I don't understand that when I see the other things so reduced. But I am concerned when people are walking into town with suitcases full of cash, which no local can compete with, and then claiming that they need help fixing a property. I don't know, I think it's gotten carried away and I think it needs, we need to put the brakes on it in somehow and make it
No, your time is up. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Karen, good points.
Thank you.
And by the way, we did posit, your council did posit, so we did, you did exactly what you just said.
Yes.
And that's where we currently stand. Hi there.
Hi, Kristy Ramers. Karen just said most of what I wanted to say, so I reiterate what she wants to say. And I, I just wonder that the program, I think, is a really great idea. And I I don't know if there is a way that we can put more rules to it to have it actually function in the way that it's supposed to function. Back in twenty twenty three, when I I was doing a lot of research on Mills Act, I did see that there are other towns that will have sort of a a period where they actually get the assessor to get them the amount. So that, and then that's presented to council so that they can make the decision based on an actual financial amount. I think that was everything else Karen already said, so that's it.
Sort of makes sense, doesn't it? To know what you're voting on when you vote, yes. All right, must be at least one other person that's interested in this. Anybody online?
Yes.
All right, we've got Will, go ahead.
Will Ray, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Will Ray, you already know why I'm here. First off, I want to say thank you, I'm excited to see that Mills Act is being spoken about today and I'm grateful that the council made time to put it on the agenda and speak so in depth about it. So thank you. I want to offer a couple of opinions, sort of counterpoints to what the other speakers said. First of all, Ms. Jeanette mentioned that there's some consideration that was made in twenty twenty three about excluding routine maintenance. I, for historic homes, I mean, I, well, first of all, I want to say that I don't think the city should adopt that course of action. The Mills Act, by definition, includes owners who actively participate in the restoration and maintenance of their historic properties. Restoration and maintenance receive equal billing. I think that's part of the reason the Mills Act takes the form of a ten year contract rather than if this was strictly for rehabilitation and restoration, why is it not a one time grant or a one time rebate? Um, and I think, you know, perhaps some of the fog of, uh, the black box about maintenance is, well, you know, it's gonna need a roof sometime in the next ten years. And, um, you know, you might not be able to judge exactly what that, what that is. But I think maintenance is a really important part. Especially because for these historic homes, as I'm sure you're aware, maintenance can require extra expenses. Um, whenever I walk the dog, when I'm in Carmel and I walk the dog and see the fairy tale houses, I think about how some of those, each little shingle is unique and you can't, you're not going to the hardware store to buy uh, composition shingle to put on those houses. You need to hire somebody who's still able to do that, I'm sure it's getting more rare. Um, also, one of the benefits of being, having a home registered in the, uh, in the Register of Historic Resources is preservation of non-conformities. Um, and I think a lot of those non-conformities make up some of the historic character of these homes that are being preserved. Um, I know another speaker mentioned, uh, like windows, window panes that need to be remade that would never be put into a home today. Um, these are the non-conformities that are preserved or, you know, maybe your crawl space, uh, under the home is not tall enough to, to meet code today, but that's the way it is and it costs more to send someone under there because it's so, you know, your crawl space isn't tall enough to, to work on the HVAC. Uh, so there are additional costs incurred. Um, and in my view, this has been the, uh, the spear of the Mills Act in its application to this point is um, incentivizing owners to take on the responsibility of preserving and maintaining exactly these types of features. With regard to, uh, the, uh, the value cap, I think from what we've seen, you know, obviously it's no secret that home values are not what they were when the Mills Act was passed, when Props thirteen and nineteen were passed. I think we should be wary of hard capping eligibility at a number um, that, like, say, three million or four million dollars. If you're talking three million dollars, a lot of homes in Carmel by the Sea would simply just be, uh, not eligible. And this could easily exclude longstanding community members who bought their homes decades ago when the homes were a fraction of their current fair market value.
Will, your time is up. Could you summarize in like ten or twenty words the point that you really want the council here to consider as we start discussing this? I mean, you brought up some good points, I just, I want to make sure we're getting your point.
Yeah. I think routine maintenance is a key element of the Mills Act. Um, because of how much it costs to maintain certain elements of a historic home. And I think that, uh, serious consideration needs to be added.
Okay, so part of that is also making sure that it's being done on a regular basis as they go.
And they're
Okay, good, I think we've got one other one?
Yeah, Nick Ortega. Oh. Done.
Hey. All right, Jeff, you're on.
Thank you, hi, Mr. Ortega. Um, I think that most of these questions, um, we, I kind of asked last year when we were, when we put the pause in. Um, in the, in the sheets that, um, in the presentation that, um, our planning director gave, there are, there's a slide that has to do with how other jurisdictions limit their exposure to um, limit their exposure to property tax loss. And, and the best one, or I just ask you about one in particular. Um, there's, so there are a couple, um, like, for example, the city of Coronado, fifty percent tax limit, tax reduction limit for individual properties. Is that something that, um, your office can do or not do? Um, how does that, how does it work in Coronado when we seem to be unable to do that here?
Actually, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, are you able to hear me?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure how it would work in Coronado as far as having a limit, I would imagine that's up to the municipality. Uh, as far as the assessor's offices, you know, our function in, in the in the, in the process when it comes to Mills Act property is we, we, once it, once it goes through the contract and it gets recorded at the recorder's office, then we can look at it for the following fiscal year. And it adds at that point that we start looking at, okay, what is the market rent? And we have a capitalization rate that's primarily provided by the Board of Equalization. Um, and obviously the, the values on something that transferred recently, uh, like a recent sale, well, because the market values are so much higher at this point, you know, the restricted value tends to be significantly less, meaning the Mills Act value than, than the market value or, or the value of the transaction, which would lead to a substantial reduction.
So I'm, I'm gonna use this example that I, that I went on about before, before you were here. Um, we have a, we have a property that we granted a Mills Act to last year that before the Mills Act contract, they were paying, uh, thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars a year and now they're paying forty-three hundred and eighty dollars a year. So your office presumably did the rent analysis that you're talking about and came up with forty-three hundred and eighty dollars a year. And let's say we wanted to go through the process and we wanted to limit the reduction to, you know, just to round it off, fifteen thousand dollars a year. So we wanted to limit, we wanted to put a floor on their tax bill of fifteen thousand dollars a year. Um, how would we do that? Is that your office, is that the tax collector's office? Um, do we have the authority to do that? Can we do that? You know, I asked this question last year and I got, I got some stares. And I'm wondering, I'm hoping that you might have a better answer for me, like, how that might work.
That might be, we can't do anything on our end because once the contract is recorded, we just have to look at the market rent and apply the capitalization rate that the Board of Equalization gives us. Uh, so there isn't something on our end where we can put a cap on it. Uh, that might be something to look at when you're developing or making changes to the way you set up a contract, but I'd imagine that probably have to go through the city or maybe the city manager.
But we don't do. Yeah, Mr. Ortega, can you do a, an example calculation? I mean, again, if we know what the assessed value is, because it's recently sold, for example, can you do a, I think, uh, Yeah, so I guess, let me, let me, let me phrase it in words that I understand. So let's say we were doing this contract, um, last year and before we entered into this contract on this thirty-two thousand dollar house that resulted in the tax bill of, you know, less than five thousand dollars. Can we ask your office to do the calculation for us so that we know what we're getting into?
Uh, that, that might not be possible because we have to look at the, at the market rent as of the first of the year.
But can we ask you to do it for last year? Like, like, let's say we were doing one tonight and we're in, you know, October of twenty twenty-five. Can we ask you, like, what would have happened had we done this last year? And you can do the calculation as of last year? Like, I appreciate that there are vagaries in the, in the, in the, in the rent bill every year or whatever, whatever number you're using, but are you able to do that for us?
The capitalization rate will fluctuate year to year because it's tied, one of the components that, that it's tied to is the third-year conventional rate. So as that changes, this capital, capitalization rate will change year to year. I think you were saying earlier that sometimes the bill will go up and down. And it's because part of the cap rate is tied to that conventional. If we were looking backwards in time, I, it's possible that we could look at something for you, assuming that we had the, the data um, for the rental properties at, at, at a earlier point in time. And then we already had the capitalization rate that the BOE provided from a prior year. Um, but I'm not sure how that would help in you looking at
It would keep us from being off by eighty percent.
Yeah, I mean, it would, like, I don't think the mayor had his microphone on, so I'll just repeat what he said. It will keep us from being off by eighty percent, like, maybe only off by ten percent.
And one of the other things you have to remember is that even if it's not off by eighty percent and it goes into a Mills Act contract, that, that benefit will transfer if the property transfers. So you might have a million-dollar home that goes to a Mills Act contract and you're not seeing a significant decrease. But if that home were to sell five years later for fifteen million, you know, then you're looking at the same situation possibly.
So, so can I jump in, Jeff? All right, I'll let, I'll let you go back. So if the Cabin on the Rocks, the Frank Lloyd Wright House, sold right now for forty million dollars, which it could, then the tax base sells at twenty-nine thousand dollars.
We're still looking at the, at the estimated market rent as of January first and then taking the capitalization rate that the Board of Equalization provides, which tends to be higher than, you know, fair market value capitalization rate. Uh, and that's, I think that's the nature of it being a restricted value being in the Mills Act. Um, so yes, it could, it could definitely stay the same if the capitalization rate doesn't change because, you know, the estimated market rent hasn't changed. We're not looking at comparable sales at that point because we have to value it as a restricted property.
So do you think that the, this valuation method that I guess was part of the Mills Act when it was passed in nineteen, nineteen seventy?
It's actually in the guidelines, I don't have it off the top of my head, I had to leave the office, that's why I had to join on my phone, so I apologize for that. Um, I want to say it's a letter to assessors from the BOE. I want to say it was in two thousand and five, might have been number thirty-five, but don't quote me out of that. But those were the guidelines to, for, for the valuation of restricted, restricted properties, Mills Act properties.
Has there, you, you might not know this, but has there ever been a discussion about coming up with a better way to do this? Because in two thousand and twenty-five in Carmel by the Sea, it just doesn't make much sense.
That might be the reason that some other municipalities have caps as far as whether it's value or whether it's contracts. Um, they, they possibly adapted to the fact that, you know, you'd be asking the Board of Equalization to, to change, uh, something that's been in place for some time.
Yeah, maybe a good reason why it should be looked at.
Let me, I'm gonna take my time back from Dale.
You got it.
And say, so you guys, your office calculates the, the, the tax number and then you just like email the tax number over to the tax collector and the tax collector generates our bills, right?
Well, so we, we will calculate the assessed value and we put it onto the tax roll and then when the, when the tax will, next fiscal year rolls over, you know, the tax collector will send out a tax bill and then they will collect the funds.
So, so in, let me go back to my example. So in the city of Coronado, where they limit, where they limit the, they limit the tax reduction to fifty percent. So you're describing a process that, you're describing a process that you calculate, you calculate a value and then you put that value on the tax roll and then the tax collector sends, sends me a tax bill. And my question for you is, we, you know, I, I won't speak for anybody else up here, but I would be interested in limiting the, the tax reduction to some number, and let's just say fifty percent. How do I interrupt the process that you have, you have described so that you don't send a tax bill out that I'm, you don't send a tax bill out that, um, is, you know, eighty, an eighty percent reduction instead of a fifty percent reduction? Or let's say I have, let's say I have a, a dollar limit, which is probably easier for you. So let's say you don't send out a tax bill for, you know, five thousand dollars instead of twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the limit that the council wished to put on you. How do I interrupt your process? How do I, how do I grab your process and prevent that from happening?
I'm not sure how they do it at the city of Coronado, but as far as our process goes, once the contract is recorded, then we just have to value it based on BOE guidelines. There isn't a, where you can come in and say, I, I needed to stop at five thousand or a ten thousand. I'd be interested to see how they are, if they're
If I, if I, if, 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 when we record the contract, so you go, you go to the recorder's office and you grab the contract. If we record a contract and there's a line in the contract that says the minimum assessed value for this house is, you know, three million dollars instead of three hundred thousand dollars. When you do your calculation of the tax, of the assessed value, will you look at the contract and say, oh, we're not allowed to use a three hundred thousand dollar value? We have to use a three million dollar value? Because that's what that contract says, is, would that work?
I don't believe we're able to do that because then that would, that would, you know, step away from the BOE guidelines as far as how to value it. Um, it would be interesting to, to understand how the city of Coronado does it. If, I'd imagine they, um, what county assessor they fall under and if it has more to do with how the contract is set up and how many properties they limit as opposed to an actual value per property. Uh, but, but on our end, I, I hear what you're saying and unfortunately there isn't a mechanism because we have to follow the BOE guidelines as far as the valuation. And, um, and that would have to do with, you know, estimating the market value or the fair market rent of the property and then using the capitalization rate that they provided for the given year.
Right, but all I, all, my, my final example was, my last, my most, my, my final example was simply putting a, putting a floor on the value and saying, if you come up with a three hundred thousand dollar value, no, don't use that. Use a, use a three million dollar value. So it doesn't interrupt your calculations, it just interrupts the number you type into that email.
It would, it would interrupt the value we type into the role and that would be uh, getting away from the valuation purposes based on what the BOE guidelines. Uh, we, we're, we're, you know, wherever seen by the Board of Equalization, we have to follow those guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Nicholas? Thank you, Nicholas, you've been very enlightening.
No, we're any
How this works.
I apologize for not being on, I had to join from my phone because I had to step away. But, um, any questions that come up, feel free to reach out to our office, uh, we're available. Um, you know, just working together.
No problem, it worked out fine, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye. Um, so we've done public comment, correct? And we brought it back already with questions and now we don't have any more questions? Right? So we're gonna go for a discussion here. I'll, I'll start if you want. Yeah, somebody's got to start.
Um, well, so I'm, I'm still learning a lot. I mean, um, Alessandra and Jeff have been through this before. Um, I, so what I came in thinking was that this is sort of an all or nothing proposition to me. And I was inclined to say all, um, because I like the idea of the Mills Act, um, in that, you know, this is an historic town. Um, it, I know it's expensive to redo, rebuild, remodel historic resources. Um, I think it's even more expensive to do it for commercial properties. I think the commercial properties are hugely important to the architectural character of the town. Um, so I, I, I like the idea that there can be incentives. Um, and I particularly like the idea that there could be property tax incentives. Uh, and even the incentives that can go with the land. So that was my first, you know, brush coming in and that I really wasn't interested in, um, limits of any kind. Um, I guess it's sort of a laissez-faire capitalist approach to, um, to property rights. Um, but in the last hour, I think I've completely changed my attitude towards this. Um, what I, what I'm understanding is that uh, the value, if you will, of these contracts and to, to, to us, the value is negative, almost always. Um, and that it's a reduction in, in property tax receipts. And again, coming in, I was like, okay, I could take a little hit, hit in property taxes um, if that helps protect the historic integrity of the town. Um, but it has to be predictable. And if it's not predictable to this degree, um, I'm not sure I'm interested in entering into a contract. It almost feels like dealing with calpers, right? Um, I mean, yeah, this thing might change by fifty percent next year. And, uh, that's not a good way to do business and it's not the tax assessor's fault, if you will. I mean, that, what we just heard from Mr. Ortega was that, you know, he's got a box and what comes out of that box is dependent on what goes into the box. And he can't alter that based on what we would like him to do. Um, I'm, I'm assuming there's some way we could alter the contracts to achieve the outcome that Coronado uh, does, is doing or, as he said, perhaps he's got, just got a different um, assessor in, in that county. Um, this also seems like a huge resource suck um, on our town. And, and one of the things I, I, having been in this job now for whatever, it's ten months, is we, um, I think we have to as a town do a better job of doing fewer things much better. Um, you know, we're, we're a city of one square mile, but we, we do a lot of things. And in many regards, we do the same number of things that big cities do with one-tenth of the resources or one-one-hundredth of the resources. Uh, and that's a real challenge. And so every time we add complete, we add new things to what staff has to do, uh, I think we do, uh, we just doom ourselves to doing a less good job um, and achieving less predictable, less desirable outcomes. And this just seems like one of those, those things. Um, that, the, just the annual maintenance of these things seems like a lot. And frankly, I don't, I don't believe we have the capacity, and by capacity And by capacity, means a lot of things. Um, but some of it is just the technical skill. You know, we might be lucky and have someone that really gets this on staff and we just may not have that person right now. Um, because we got six arrows in the quiver and they are what they are. Um, so I'm, I'm surprising myself to say, I think we should shut this thing down. Um, and just not do anymore and, uh, declare the nineteen to be canceled. And then they run for ten more years and we've got, that, that's a known level of effort for our, um, staff and after ten years it goes away. So.
Thank you.
Um, so, so I'm with Bob. I think that, I think that's well said. Um, I will lead with my conclusion, which is that I just don't see, I just don't see a good rationale for a Mills Act program in a place like Carmel. And especially after what we heard tonight about the unpredictability, unpredictability and sort of like the inherent flaws of, of the underlying law and the setup. You know, I, I like to be sort of reasonable and moderate. Those are kind of my instincts. Um, but I'll rant for a minute. You know, in every business agreement that I've ever signed, I always ask myself as sort of a, a sanity check, like, am I being a sucker? And in the context of these Mills Act contracts, I think we're the suckers. You know, my family, so we own a historic home. We pay twenty-five thousand dollars a year in property taxes. And I would love to have my neighbors pay eighty percent of my property taxes. But I just think it's terrible public policy. Why? Because I'm going to renovate my house anyway, right? So why, why are my neighbors going to pay for that? Now, if we want to help the owners of historic homes, here's something you could do. Just get rid of the fees for historic homeowners. Think about this for a second. They are, the city has imposed on these property owners. You need to preserve your home for a public benefit. And then we say, but by the way, you're going to have to pay all these additional fees anytime you want to do something with your property. So, like, I want to change my shutters, which are rotting because my house hasn't had gutters in eighty years. And it's going to cost us thirty-five hundred dollars to get a review to replace my shutters, right? And, and it's for your benefit. So when you walk by the house, you can have the benefit of knowing that it has historical integrity. So take that off my plate, right? That's something that you could do for us. You know, I think there's, in some communities under certain circumstances, like the Mills Act could make sense even with its flaws. Like imagine a place that's suffering from disinvestment, right? And it's, maybe it's in the Sierra foothills or something. It used to be a logging town and there was a glorious hotel on Main Street, right? And, you know, the circus got up and left and the town's down on its luck and it just doesn't pencil to renovate this hotel that's the centerpiece of downtown. Does the Mills Act make sense in that situation? You know, I think, I think it could. But that's just not the situation, you know, that we face here in Carmel. Like the, the Mills Act is designed to create a financial incentive for owners of historic properties to preserve and maintain them. But here, you know, where owners already have an economic incentive to maintain their property and the resources, like the Mills Act winds up subsidizing a private property owner for doing something that they were going to do anyway. Um, that's certainly the case with a commercial property. So like with a hotel, for every incremental dollar in net operating income, when you renovate some old hotel in Carmel, you get twenty dollars of property tax, of property value increase, right? So there's already an incentive. And like with a single-family home, you know, could you have a situation where, um, you know, if people, when it, when it sells, like the next person's going to renovate it, right? It's going to get renovated. You know, are there edge cases where you have a historic home that's owned by somebody who is house-rich and cash-poor? Absolutely. And I think we can all name a couple of those people. You know, but again, eventually that property is going to sell and it's going to be renovated. That's the first thing that happens. The house sells, somebody comes in, they renovate the property and we already have strong protections in place to ensure that when that renovation occurs, the historical integrity of the property is maintained. Um, so I just view this kind of as a solution in search of a problem. I just can't justify taking your tax dollars and giving that money to your neighbor so they can do a home renovation that they were going to do anyway. Or we're still giving your tax dollars to a business um, to subsidize an already profitable investment they were going to undertake anyway. You know, so in this discussion where we've been kind of narrowly focused on this, like specific policy tool, but I think it would be wise for us to sort of step back and ask ourselves, what is the specific problem that we are trying to solve? And is there even a problem? Um, and if there is, is the Mills Act the best policy response to that problem? So, you know, we're at the side. I'm ready to listen. You know, often the four of you raise good points, um, and, and change my mind. Uh, but I, but I just come into the discussion, you know, pretty skeptical.
Very good. Alessandra, I'm waiting to hear from you.
Thanks. Um, I, I'm really torn here because in theory, I really think the Mills Act is a great thing. It's a great way for historic preservation and I share a lot of what Bob said is especially also, you know, we didn't get the twenty twenty-four numbers. Those are really just stunning to indicate that our theory and ideally how we want this program to work, it's absolutely not working. And, and there's fundamental flaws with it and there's fundamental fairness issues. Um, and I'm not quite sure how we can solve them. Um, I, I don't want to throw out the whole program, but yet I don't know what kind of solutions we can exactly find. They're going to be able to, um, address these, you know, major issues that need to be fixed. And some of it, you know, does come from the fact that property values are so high here and they keep increasing here. So we've turned it into, you know, very wealthy people can then buy the homes and like we're saying, do we want to subsidize them to do work that they most likely would have done anyway? Um, and I have concerns with even trying to set limits. If you do a three million dollar limit on a house, it's a couple of years from now going to be hard to even find a three million dollar house. So you'd either constantly have to be, you know, upping those numbers. Um, and I do worry about that ties in with the city and the city being able to keep track of all these contracts and is the work being done? And like you said, the staff capacity to keep following up on that. So there's fundamental problems. Um, I'm not ready to throw it out, but yet I don't exactly know how we can come to a solution to how to fix those problems and maybe ultimately Bob and what some of the rest of you are saying is that we can't have it. I never, I didn't think we were going to go in that direction when we started this meeting and even this weekend, especially with a lot of this material that was not in the packet. Um, but here we are. So I'm all open to listening to the rest of you and any ideas that, that come up and, and giving us all some more time and certainly giving the community more time because let's face it, we had what, maybe two, three comments? So, um, if we continue this meeting or have another subsequent meeting, um, on this, because it's, it's a major issue and yet we have a gentleman who's also spoke very passionately about why he wants this program and how it would help him uh, and help protect and restore his historic home. So, um, like I said, I'm, I'm ready to listen and, and hear all kinds of ideas if we have them.
Sure. Thanks Dale. Um, so I, uh, so I've been speaking about this for a lot of years, as Alessandra and everyone else knows. If I was, if I was faced with the, you know, if, if there was a, if there was a, if this was instead of hearing to just dissolve the Mills Act and I was given two choices, keep it or dissolve it, I would vote with Bob and Hans and just dissolve it. So I think what we have, um, I think that the things that Bob says about capacity, I think that those things are, are true. You know, he's right when he says that we have a small town, you know, we try to do all these things and, and, you know, this is, it seems like this takes a lot of effort. Um, you know, there's a lot of effort, some of which we do, some of which we don't do, a lot of unknowns. Bob wants it to be predictable. Those are all good things and I agree with what he said. Um, on the other, on the other hand, Alessandra is talking about, um, you know, doing things for, uh, you know, to help people and, and, and I think that, I think that, you know, Hans's, Hans's comments notwithstanding about helping people like, uh, doing away with the, doing away with the fees for historic evaluations, whatever, whatever that might be. I think those are, those are, are great ideas. I'm not, you know, I'm eighty percent of the way there to sort of throwing the program out. But as I look at, you know, we, I, you know, obviously I was quizzing the, quizzing the assessor just like I did last year and, and made about as much progress as got as much good information, you know, information I liked as I did last year. You know, when I look at the, there is a, there is a sort of back-of-the-envelope way of sort of fixing this, maybe. And I think it's not, maybe I was looking at the wrong sheet when I was looking at Coronado and, and Salinas and Beverly Hills. Maybe we should, I should have been looking at the next page, um, which is just limits. Like you can only get a Mills Act contract on a house if you, like, like so, for example, in Los Angeles County, you can only get a Mills Act contract on your house if the assessed value is a million dollars or less. And I think that, um, you know, the million dollar number is, is really interesting because you can't buy a house in Carmel for a million dollars anymore. Like you can't, there's no, there's, there's no property, even a property without water, um, costs more than a million dollars. But there are a lot of people that have, uh, assessed, have assessed values of less than a million dollars. And those are the people that you described, I think, I think it was Hans, who might be house-rich and cash-poor. And so people, you know, people that have been living in town or own their homes for thirty years, um, house-rich, cash-poor. And I think, I think that there may be, you know, I think that there may be some room, I, I don't know. Um, if, if there's some room to sort of squeeze a program in, you know, I'd have to get over Bob's objections, which is why would we have a program that, that only helps a couple of people and it's a big, it's a big time sink? But, you know, I'm looking at this million-dollar residential number. Maybe that's an answer. That helps, um, that sort of helps people that are, helps these people that have, that have been in their homes for a long time and, and don't really have the money to maintain their, to have the money to maintain their historic, their historic homes, you know, ten million, uh, the, the, the tax bill on a million-dollar piece of property in, in Carmel would be, you know, eleven thousand dollars a year. And for someone on a fixed income, that might be a lot of money. And maybe it's worth it to, um, explore, maybe it's worth it to explore a low, a low, um, assessed value Mills Act problem. I can't say that I would make it, um, a high priority of mine, but I'm, but I'm interested. Another question, just to be, just to be, um, clear, um, just to make sure that I say this. Um, does council want to issue non-renewals? Yes, I think we should issue non-renewals on, on all nineteen of the contracts.
Do you want to?
Can I ask you a quick clarifying question?
Absolutely.
When you think about the, the reason for the, um, you know, like, for example, if we, if we customize the Mills Act to focus on those, um, house-rich, cash-poor folks, is it because you're worried that the property is going to, um, fall into such disrepair that it's going to lose features that can't be restored? Or is it, um, or is it that you think it'll just help us to maintain the aesthetics of, you know, a few properties in town? Do we want to look at a property that's falling down?
So I would say it's probably more of the former than the latter. Um, you know, helping to just maintain the properties. But I go back to, what year was it Alessandra? Nineteen seventy-two? You know, I go back to like what it was in nineteen seventy-two and obviously that was before Proposition thirteen. Um, I think, not obviously, but I think it was before Proposition thirteen and, and tax rates in California were, were going up and, and there was sort of a rebellion. I think that was the, maybe this was like the pre-Proposition thirteen rebellion. And, and I think that the problem that I've described, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think the problem I've described about people being cash-rich, uh, cat, house-rich and cash-poor, I think that that was the problem that the Mills Act was trying to solve back in nineteen seventy-two. You know, old historic homes and obviously in nineteen seventy-two, it would have been houses from the twenties, not from the sixties, but, you know, houses that were built even more poorly than houses in the sixties were built. And it was a, a, a movement to sort of help the people that had inherited and not necessarily inherited, but it were living in these houses to sort of maintain their houses. And I think there's some, I think, uh, you know, if I take a step back, I think there's some inherent goodness. You know, some inherent sort of, uh, goodness in that idea of helping people that, um, are in these old, you know, not well-kept-up houses, helping them to keep their houses. And I think that putting a, putting this cap on it would disqualify anybody who's a new owner. So I think that there's something, I think that there might be something worth chasing, um, in that, but I don't know. You know, it'd be interesting to know like how many of the three thousand homes in Carmel have assessed values of less than a million dollars. Like that would be like a completely fascinating piece of information. And would help us maybe, you know, we only have two hun, you know, and, and I guess to, to Bob's point again, I mean, we only have two hundred and seventy historic homes. And it'll be interesting to see what the, what the valuations, what the tax, the, the assessor's valuations on those two hundred and seventy homes are. You know, the, right now, and then we would know what the universe of, what the universe of, of what I'm talking about really is. You know, whether it's a hundred and thirty-five homes or whether it's twenty-seven or whether it's six. Maybe that's an interesting, maybe that would be an interesting next step. I don't, I don't know.
All right, my turn. One thing I can say is if it was, if we were getting, if we were frozen at Prop thirteen rates of thirty percent instead of six percent, this would be a pretty easy decision. Because that, we would be losing about a million and a half dollars a year right now. Not three hundred thousand a year. So our, you know, our, what is it, forty thousand? It'd be five times as much. So the problem would be worse. If, one of the things that I've seen and I've heard from people that have contacted me is the parents die, the kids inherit the house, the tax bill goes up apparently with the new laws. And so they have to sell the house and so they're hoping that with this, they can get the, the taxes lower. But then it's frozen forever and they'll probably sell the house because all of a sudden the house is worth a lot more. Is there a way that you can cancel the Mills Act on sale? Have you ever heard of that, Anna? Because that seems to be one of the, the things that we're struggling with. Because the, the value of the house does go up if you, if your tax bill is five thousand instead of thirty thousand or fifty thousand.
I think to recoup that money, you'd want that, that, that contract to be canceled prior to the sale. And if, I don't know, if, if you'd go through non-renewal, there's no.
I don't, I don't think you can. I think
Yeah.
once we sign off on this, that's the tax bill for the next ten years until we cancel.
Until, yes, but.
And if we do cancel it, then the tax bill goes back up to market rate?
Yes, after that tenth year. So essentially what you'd have to do is you'd have to approve a contract the following year, issue a non-renewal, wait that ten years. But that property could sell one time, ten times.
Yeah.
About that time.
Okay, so you can't do it. I might add that we're probably not properly tracking these and checking on everything right now. I doubt it. So whoever said that, done properly, it is onerous. And we probably don't have the resources to do it, especially with nineteen of them now. So, um, I can't believe that I'm saying this too, but, um, I think I'd vote for the other three people that said to cancel it.
I would just mention, Mayor, that, um, the scope of this agenda item.
I'm not saying we're going to vote for that.
I, I understand that.
I think, I think the, the consensus I'm seeing here, we're giving feedback.
Yeah.
I think we're leaning towards.
I get that, but I, I need to.
I, I, I look at all these, there's like eight things or ten things that you can do to control this. And I think what we're learning is some of them might not even work. It sounds good on the surface, but with a rapidly appreciating market, it's probably pretty tough to control this because in the end they're going to appraise the property at whatever they're going to appraise it at. So, uh, So I think we've got a lot of feedback here.
Mayor, could I finish?
Yes, you can. You can tell us how to wrap this up.
I think it needs to be made clear that all of your expressions of opinions tonight are subject to further discussion at a future council meeting, that you're not making any decision
Correct.
Tonight. The, the way the agenda reads is you receive a presentation and provide direction to staff regarding the preparation of proposed policy modifications for future council, council consideration. So I think your authority under the agenda is to do just that. You've received a presentation. You could certainly do a motion if you wanted to kind of formalize what the direction is, but the direction would have to be returned to
Next one.
The council at a future meeting for consideration of whatever it is you want.
The direction.
Whatever, whatever it is you want to be considered.
And further discussion of that.
And, and action at that time, yes.
Good. Well, Chip, you've been listening to this. Why don't you suggest how we proceed?
Well, I, I would suggest that you provide us direction that to come back with a policy resolution that issues non-renewals on all 19 of the existing contracts and looks to make amendments to our municipal code to, to basically strike the language of the Mills Act in our, in our historic preservation ordinance. And, but, but as part of that, I really liked where some of you were going, there should be some kind of, maybe there was an incentive program. And so just for reference, I think I have the numbers correctly, Brandon, but on a million dollar remodel, the planning and building fees would be about 6%. So that's $60,000. That can be a significant incentive for someone to, to remodel or maintain their, any property. But if you, if you couched it as you've got a designated historic resource, that might be enough to, to help people out and without going through this, these gyrations with these calculations. So you could, you could, so real quickly, sir, the third, the third point would be to come back with some other innovative programs that you could talk about in the future that would incentivize the maintenance of, maintenance of historic resources. That's what I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, for me, I'd comment on, if I may.
Yes.
Comment on Chip's comment and sort of Hans's comment, you know? I'm, I'm wondering, maybe I shouldn't just be wondering this. I'm wondering whether I should give Hans a break on his permit fees for his house. And maybe that's, you know, which side of the line, which side of the line is that on? You know, there's a, the difference for me, there's a difference for me and I don't, I don't know where I would, where I would come down. There's a difference for me between someone who is renovating and expanding their house and someone who is maintaining their house. Or, you know, we've had Mills Act contracts where they have been, there have been like retaining walls that have sort of fallen into disrepair and they're huge.
Manscaping.
You know, they're huge items. I'm not, I'm not talking about trees. I'm talking about like structural things that are wrong with the house that are, you know, retaining walls or beams that are screwed up or, or stuff like that. And I'm really interested in that stuff, which is sort of what I was, which is sort of where I was talking about when I was sort of talking to Alessandra about, about that. I'm a little less interested in alleviating Hans's permit fees, but I am interested in, I would be interested in alleviating Hans's historical review fees.
To be clear, I never said get rid of my permit fees.
Chip did.
Okay. I, I'm just saying the additional, there are additional fees if you own a historic home, you have to pay the historian, you have to pay the fee to go to the HRB and it's a public benefit and it's a, it's a private cost that you put on the homeowner.
So Anna, maybe you could come, come back with some options and some what ifs on different types of projects so we can judge what the benefit and the cost.
Where I was going with the options for number three. And the, the challenge with the historic evaluation is done by a third party versus the permit fees which pay for staff time. But we'll, we'll come back with a suite of options for you to take a look at.
Yeah, because I think our intent is not to, to punish people who have historic houses. We want to help them, but
Yeah.
But this has turned into something more than that.
Yeah, so, so I mean, you know, you don't have to make a motion as the city attorney is saying, but that's what, that's what I captured in my notes, Mr. Mayor.
And Mayor, could I add one thing? I guess the question would be, I think number three is, what I heard from you and from Chip is one is consider, you're not deciding tonight, but consider a future meeting whether to issue renewal, non-renewal notices on the existing contracts is one. Two is to review the city's municipal code to see if there needs to be any amendments to that with respect to the Mills Act. And three, the incentive program. So I'm thinking that number three probably will take a little longer than numbers one and two. So I guess the question is
Longer to, for you to write, for the staff to write up?
Yeah. Longer for, longer for it to come back to council because that third one might take a little bit of time. So the reason I'm speaking now is trying to get your direction. Would you like for staff to come back with numbers one and two before number three or all three at one time?
I'd like a holistic solution because it shows our intent, what's not.
And we've got a war to hunt.
Yeah, the war team's still in place.
There's no reason. We're just going, we're just going to a couple of months of notice, but I think the notice has to happen at a certain time.
Well, I would like, like all that said, I mean, I don't know when the deadlines of the renewals are.
Yeah, when is that?
But no, I think that, that, my impression is the deadlines of the renewals are on the anniversary of their contracts. So that we have 19 of them now and their, their contracts, you know, fall at different times of the year. And so I think it might, it might be worthwhile to have, to take, to be expedient about that if that's where we're going.
Yeah, notice needs to be given 60 days before the anniversary date and perhaps that's why I raised it as to whether or not you want to wait on the incentive program discussion until it's ready or, or have, or wait on everything until it's all
Can I get some head nods on?
Oh, unless like all, all the effective dates are January 1st.
So are we already?
Well, the, the, it says on, on the 2024 approved contracts on the slide, it says that the dates were, unfortunately, it says the dates were September 10th. So what, which is, I'm looking at dates of contracts here on the slide just because it's big print and I don't have to look at that on the sheet.
If we miss a year, we're still moving to the correct
It's going to be 10 years.
And, and we get 6% of it, so it's
Although those three are the bulk of the dollar amount that September was.
So we've got dates of contracts and we've got effective dates and I'm just dealing with the first 15. Effective dates are variable, but the effective date seems to be January 1st of the year after the contract date, the date of the agreement.
So
So we're, we're already within 60 days, probably close, not really.
We probably wouldn't get back here to vote anyway unless we do a special meeting.
Well, you could give notice on if you choose to do this, which you're not doing tonight, but if you choose
That's too rushed.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with just doing this? We want to do this right.
Yeah, we got
And we want to, we want to come up some good ideas to incent people. So, good. Very good. Interesting discussion, everybody. Thank you so much. All right, that's the end of our open session, right? Yep. Before you wanted to do a dedication to Danny Levett because nobody's going to be here at the end. Do you want to do it?
Sure, yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you who just came, I, I unfortunately had to announce at the beginning of the meeting that I don't remember what time it was, several hours ago, I got a call that Mr. Levett had died. And, you know, I've done over 30 years, a lot of projects with him. I know some of my predecessors had done, done land